Okay, we are now live.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eklund. I'd like to now call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. It's a work session. Today is Monday, January 4th, and it's 3:00 P. M. I would now like to make note that I am joined by Nastacy Caldwell, Mr. Ed Dennison, Mr. David Hensley, Mr. Philip Holmes, Mr. Robert Levy, Ms. Pam Thompson, Dr. Bob Grimacey, Ms. Sonia Potter, Board Clerk, and I believe we have Board Attorney Neil Ramey on standby if needed. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Madam Chair, I have a point of order. The point of order is pursuant to Policy 1324. The Chair was given notice that we wish to put on the agenda several things: the progress on restart, on the restart in D schools, cybersecurity, community engagement, and, um, yeah, those, those, those things, those should be added to the agenda.
Thank you for that information. I think I responded to your request on the agenda additions, that more information was needed. We did add that the information on sustainable improvements in our existing school facilities, as you had asked. You'll be receiving updates on several other items on the School Board Monthly Update, which is a more appropriate venue to convey that information. I asked Mr. Hensley for more information on his request for public comment and communication, but he did not come forth with that, so we have not added it to the agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
I would, if that isn't, if that isn't overruling, I would move to, to overrule the ruling of the Chair. I believe it's clear that pursuant to our policy, I believe that's 1321, I've sent the, the Chair a copy of that policy. Simply placing it on the, simply requesting that it be placed on the agenda requires these things to be placed on the agenda, so at least we can talk about them. And if, for instance, the Chair wishes to say, well, we'll get that later, something like that, that's fine, but it needs to be placed on the agenda. So my motion would be to overrule the ruling of the Chair.
I second that motion.
Are there's in favor of overruling the Chair's?
Madam Chair, my point of order, my point of order, I believe that we have an opportunity to discuss it. And Roberts' rules specify that you have the opening comments. Any board members can make comments as they deem necessary, and then you can make closing comments prior to the vote. That's my point of order.
Madam Chair, the motion is subject to debate, and your policies provide that the first comment should go to someone in favor of the motion, and then, if possible, to the extent possible, you alternate. And in general, I think it's good practice to allow everyone to speak on any motion.
According to Roberts' rules, each person is allowed to speak one time until all people who wish to speak have spoken, then a person can speak a second time. Yes, sir. All right, then we will return to Mr. Levy. Do you have something you'd like to add to your motion?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. The reason why I've, the reason why I've made this motion is twofold. Number one, because I believe that we have to adhere to our policies, and our policies are simply that each board member can put something he wants on the agenda for discussion. There is a very, there's a big problematic situation that we have, and that is unless it's placed on the work agenda, it almost can't be placed on the regular agenda for two reasons. Number one, because there is a six-day, six-working-day requirement of notice, and number two, you should always try to work these things out prior to putting them on the agenda. Now, secondly, it may very well be that, for instance, the Chair has said that progress on our D-rated and restart schools will be done on a month-by-month basis, taking one school at a time. Maybe that's what we're going to do, but we've got to discuss that. I don't believe that's the prerogative of the Chair, to simply go ahead and say, oh, we're not going to discuss it, I'm going to do it the way I want to. Secondly, cybersecurity is extremely important. We all know what happened in Baltimore, and, with the ransomware in Baltimore. And it may very well be that we'll simply discuss whether we're going to have a, a report by our chief IT person, or something like that, but we need to put it on for discussion. Otherwise, we're never going to get to it, and we're never going to have our oversight responsibility, which is necessary. Now, this community engagement situation, I, I think I understand what Mr. Hensley's talking about. I believe Mr. Hensley was wanting to talk about having some, some town halls and things like that, but I'll leave it to him. The fact of the matter is, he wants to talk about it, and if he wants to talk about it, our rules demand that we allow people to talk about it. Just because you might have, say, several people of one mind, doesn't mean that you should foreclose on debate of these things. Now, I'm not saying that you should be in favor of one thing or another, or even, even want to discuss cybersecurity that much, but I hope that the, that the other board members will vote in favor of this, of these agenda items for two reasons. Number one, because one day, they may want to put up an agenda item, and the Chair may say, sorry, we're not going to be able to do it. And number two, simply because they may be, they may be, they may believe that I'm correct in my interpretation of the, of the rules. Our rules are no better than the way we interpret them, and in this case, they seem crystal, absolutely clear. Submit.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Is there someone who would like to speak in against the motion?
I just want to get going with his agenda and all the stuff that you guys want to do. We can put it on another agenda, but right now, we have a list of what we need to do. Everyone's prepared for this list, so let's get on with it, please.
All right, other comments? Mr. Hensley, unmute.
Yep, I'm unmuted. First of all, let me say, for those that don't know, I have a vocal cord disorder, which requires me to get injections into my vocal cords twice a year, and my recovery time is generally three to four weeks, and I'm, I'm within that recovery time. So if my voice is broken or weak, that is why. So yes, of course, I have things to say on this. The, as Mr. Levy pointed out, the rules are clear. Any member can request items be added to the agenda, and if made within six times, they're, they're deemed timely, and they, they shall be added to the agenda. Adding it to the agenda does not mean, well, we'll cover that later, we can add it to a future agenda, or we don't have enough information. As Mr. Levy pointed out, the rules are clear. Our submissions were timely. Ironically, my request in addition was that we start discussing how we can better further engage and improve our community engagement, and I'm very disappointed that an agenda item to improve community engagement was not added to the agenda. To Ms. Caldwell's point, I'm sorry that the Chair decided to ignore our rules and not add it to the prepared agenda. Had she done so, everyone would have known about them and been prepared to discuss them. So there is no reason that these items that were timely submitted should not be on today's agenda. That is all.
Are there other comments?
Madam Chair, this is Pam, and I would just like to comment that it is my understanding that the items that were submitted to be placed on the agenda was responded to with a follow-up. I did not, it was not clear to me that the actual items be placed on the agenda. So I would suggest as well that we have an opportunity to follow up with regard to the restart schools, cybersecurity. I think that our team needs to be prepared to respond to all of the questions that would be surrounding those items. With community engagement, I don't know to the depth and degree that, that we want to discuss that, but placing it on maybe the February agenda at least gives everyone an opportunity to follow up. I know that some of these items may have been submitted through the Christmas holidays, when, when our team was away, so I think we just need to proceed with what we have in front of us.
All right, are there other comments?
I, I do, if, if no one else has a comment.
All right, yes, sir. Mr. Levy.
Okay. The only thing we're talking about is our rules, and if we're not going to obey our rules, these are our policies, then why should our children obey, obey policies? I sent everyone a copy of that policy. You know, we need to, we need to read that policy. If we're going to dis, if we're not going to obey our policies, how are we going to tell our employees, our teachers, obey our policies? Now, you may think that, that this isn't worth discussing, or could be discussed other times, that's fine, but what you're proposing to do is disobey your policy, and that is just wrong. You know, we have rules because we're supposed to follow them, and if you decide you're not going to follow the rules, then I think it's a terrible lesson for our kids. Submit.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Mr. Holmes. Okay, I'll make a recommendation that we call a special board meeting to go over the organizational rules and procedures.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, so we cannot entertain another motion at this point. We would have to go back to the original motion. Yours you can make momentarily. Are there other comments about Mr. Levy's motion? And I'm not 100% clear what that motion is, other than to amend the, amend the agenda.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, for me, as I understood, Mr. Levy's motion was, it was a, it was to overrule a ruling that, that he took you to have made at the beginning, beginning of the meeting in not placing items on the agenda. So that's, it was a point of order that was appealed to the board, essentially. The board can overrule the Chair on any procedural matter by majority vote. That does not, there has not been a motion to approve the agenda. If this motion carries, then we will have to amend, perforce, we will have to amend the agenda to add the items that have been requested. If it fails, we will still need a motion to amend the agenda or to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. I might go ahead and add that all of the items that had been mentioned so far were actually addressed in my email prior to Christmas, in which I laid out the order and which we should cover these points. And Mr. Hensley, I did ask you for more information concerning your, your community involvement or engagement, and you did not respond. So with that amended, the Chair is open to an explanation.
Madam Chair, may I just ask?
We have additional comments.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if, excuse me, Mr. Hensley, I might be able to help you if you could give me just a second here. Could, could we just have everyone who's not currently speaking mute, because there's a lot of feedback and echoing. We'll make sure the public is able to listen to each individual's contributions, if we could go back to that. And so, Madam Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt Mr. Hensley, I just wanted to help people be able to hear what he had to say. Go ahead. Madam Chair, I'll defer to you.
At this, at this point, I would go back to ask for an actual motion, so that we can have further discussion. Is there a motion?
The, the motion has been made and seconded to, to overrule the Chair's decision not to add the requested items to the agenda. And so if, if there's no further comment, I think it would be appropriate to, to state the question for a vote.
I have additional comment.
Mr. Hensley.
I would like to respond both to the Chair and Ms. Thompson's comments. The rules state add it to the agenda. It doesn't mean, well, it was followed up on, nor does it mean we'll add it to the February agenda, nor does it mean I sent an email for additional information. The rule is clear. Submitted within six days shall be added to the agenda. We need to move away from heavily scripted and orchestrated meetings. I believe that not having these on the agenda is just a continuation of heavily scripted and orchestrated meetings. And to Mr. Levy's very, very important point, if we ignore our own rules, and we ignore the rules of this board, how can we expect our employees, such as SROs and others to ignore rules, or I'm sorry, to obey rules?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I call the question.
All right, the question has been called. Is there a second?
The, the motion's been made and seconded. If, if there's, if there's no further debate, then, and as a reminder, calling the question is not, is not a magic phrase that ends debate. It's technically a motion to close debate. It's called motion, move the previous question. It requires a second and a two-thirds vote, but again, your normal procedures for many years have been to allow everyone to comment at least once on every motion. I think that's good practice, rather than having motions to cut off debate before anyone has a chance to speak. Just a suggestion.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, then we'll proceed to vote, since there is no further discussion. And Mr. Ramey, will you restate the motion?
My point, point of order, we need to vote on Ms. Caldwell's call to the question.
But if, if she intended, if she intended to make a motion to move the previous question, which she can clarify, I don't, I don't believe that was her intent.
The motion was seconded, so let's have a vote.
The, the motion was made, Madam Chair, you'd asked to restate the, the motion. It was a motion, it was a motion on a point of order to overturn the Chair's decision. It was Mr. Levy's interpretation that you had made a decision not to add certain items to the agenda. There's been an appeal of that decision as a point of order, and that is the motion that has been made and seconded. It is before the board.
All right, is everyone clear, clear on the motion that we are?
Point of order, Miss Chair. Again, Ms. Caldwell called the question, which per the person speaking requires a two-thirds vote on that, on that call of the question.
Madam Chair, if, if Ms. Caldwell intended to make a motion to, to end the debate, then I would ask that she clarify it. That has not been the case. When board members have stated, call, I called the question, I have taken that to be, I, I believe that has been just in, for the most part, people have just been wanting to move along. If Ms. Caldwell intended to, to have a motion to end further debate, when no further...
I just want to move along. I want to move along.
If you want, if you would like, if you wish to make a motion, if you wish to clarify, Ms. Caldwell, that you've made a motion to close debate that requires a second and a two-thirds vote, I would ask that you clarify that. If not, you could simply clarify that that's not your intent, which would be a withdrawal of a formal motion. I don't believe that Ms. Caldwell intended to make a formal motion, but I may have mistaken.
No, you're right. You're correct. I want to just move along. So if I have to retract that, that's fine, but I was just trying to get this to going, so we can move on.
Madam, Madam Chair, unless there's, unless there's further comment, I would ask for unanimous consent to move to, move to a vote on the ruling of the Chair.
All right, is there unanimous consent to move on to the vote? Okay, not seeing anyone shaking their head in negation, then we will move on to the actual motion, which is to overrule the, the movement, move, the, to overrule the Chair to allow for a change in agenda, to add additional items. We, we have to do a, an individual voice vote, so when I call your name, you might go ahead and unmute, so that you will be ready. Ms. Caldwell, how do you vote?
Can you restate what we're voting on again, just so we're all clear?
Mr. Ramey, you want to say it again?
It's an appeal of the Chair's decision, so I, I, I think that, for clarity, we should vote in, in favor of overruling the Chair, or opposed to overruling the Chair.
Okay, thank, thank you for stating that. I oppose.
Mr. Dennison.
I oppose.
Mr. Hensley.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Holmes.
In favor.
Mr. Levy.
In favor.
Ms. Thompson.
I oppose.
And the Chair also votes in negation. The motion fails for three.
Okay, Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I also now make a motion to actually amend the agenda, to add two items. Number one, because our switch to the full five-day A schedule, and number two, the settle, the, an explanation for the settlement of the recent lawsuit. The reasoning for this is, to amend the, to amend the agenda to do this, is that I have had many, many, many inquiries as to our moving to a full five-day A schedule. And while I favor doing that, I believe we owe the public who is listening to us right now, an explanation, and I would like to give the superintendent a chance to explain. What do you explain to us effectively at the last board meeting, and in a letter, which made a lot of sense? But we have had a lot of people with cold feet, and they are waking up to this, this change, and they deserve at least that we address it at, at this session. And number two, we do note that the pilot and other places have had a comment on our settlement of the lawsuit for this $200,000. The, now, I know that we dealt with that in closed session, but I believe the public is entitled to an explanation of, of the reasoning of the board for settlement. Now, I was not part of that settlement, and neither were two others, but it's important that we explain to the public, perhaps, in only a couple of paragraphs, as to why that was done. And because, because the, apparently the public is, is, is in need of an explanation of this, and it's been covered in the press, and we have to be transparent. So for those reasons, I ask, I make a motion to amend the agenda, to, to have a brief discussion, an explanation on our move to a full five days for elementary schools, as well as the alternatives for parents who do not wish to do that, based on the uptick in cases. And number two, to give at least the Chair, or maybe the, the Board Counsel, a chance to explain why this $200,000 was paid in legal settlement.
Mr. Levy, might I ask that you separate that into, and let's go with just one item at a time, if they are not, not related in any way?
Okay, I will, I will go with the first item, which is that we discuss the A schedule, and then I'll make a motion, a second motion. Maybe that'll be easier.
Yeah, so you're referring to the Plan A schedule, which returns students K through five back to the five-day-a-week program?
Actually, for, actually from a four, yeah, correct, from a four-day schedule, which was going to be, and then from a B schedule, which was, which, which previously was. Yes, ma'am.
And you're asking for discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Review that. All right. Okay, Mr. Levy has made the motion, then, to add to the agenda discussion of the move for K through five students to a five-day schedule, as opposed to, to our original Plan A, which was a four-day schedule. Is there discussion? Mr. Levy, is there any, I, I think you probably said what you needed to there. Is there any...
I, I believe I did as well.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I would be happy to provide a report. The board just took action to approve the move to five days, and this was presented in detail just four weeks ago. Board took action on it to approve it, and, and I'd be happy to review the reasons for the board's unanimous approval of that action taken last month.
Are there other comments? Are there other comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will assume we can move to the question, which would be an amendment. And Mr. Levy, we would place that, I can't move the agenda there.
That would be, that would be 3C, Madam Chair.
It would become 3C under reports, information, and discussion, which would be a review of the district's move to Plan A.
Okay, I'm gonna, and since the chair has decided to do that by itself, I'll ignore the fact that there wasn't a second and there wasn't a vote. But if the chair decides to do, I want to make sure that we're doing this properly, that's my only.
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Tell me where it would go.
My intention, Mr. Levy, was simply to add information that would help the board make the determination.
And I appreciate that, Dr. Grimsley, that is exactly what I was hoping would happen, and I appreciate that.
Okay, so seeing no further discussion, we would now proceed to vote. And the motion is to add a review.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if there, this has become a bit complicated. I'm not sure if there was a second on the motion.
I make a second, I second Mr. Levy's motion.
Okay, so, and the motion, the clarification was, in a sense, it sounded like Mr. Levy was in agreement that the item would be added, the item he's requesting be added as item 3C under reports, discussion, and seconded by Ms. Thompson.
Yes, yes. Although, we will now proceed to a voice vote. Ms. Caldwell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dennison.
Aye.
Mr. Hensley.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. So we will move that review to item 3C under reports, information, and discussion, and will defer to Dr. Grimsley to review the board's decision to move to a five-day Plan A for our K through five students.
Okay, and one more, one more motion, Madam Chair. And I thank the chair and I thank the board for its indulgence that we also add to the agenda a discussion by way of, I hope, an explanation as to the reasoning of the board for the $200,000 settlement of the recent lawsuit, so that the public can be educated as to what was done and why it was done without talking about advice of counsel, but simply our, the board's rationale as opposed to what counsel may have suggested or not suggested.
Mr. Levy, I'm going to defer to the attorney before we go with other discussions to see what he thinks we can allow at this point. So let me defer to Mr. Ramey real quickly.
Well, Madam Chair, the motion is properly made. It would require a second, and then we would have discussion on the motion. For what it's worth, I would say I would not be comfortable, and Mr. Levy has said he was not interested in attorney-client, you know, waiver of attorney-client privilege. I certainly would not be comfortable making any public commentary about the case without first having a closed session discussion with the board. I think there are confidentiality provisions and terms in the settlement agreement that I would want to consult before any public statement is made. I know a press release was issued on the case, which is some explanation. Certainly, the board can have further discussion about the case and decide whether the board wishes to make any further public statement. For my part, I would much prefer to have, you know, to participate in such discussions in closed session first to preserve attorney-client privilege before any public statements were made.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Levy has made a motion to add discussion of the lawsuit LP versus the Moore County Board of Education to discussion here within the work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there other discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Ed. I think we have to be very careful here on what we say. As board members, you know, we only make one decision, we act as one. I think it would be very prudent that we could put this on the agenda for our January 11th meeting, discuss it in closed session, and determine what we could or could not say and make that statement at the January 11th meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else with discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure exactly how to do this, because I think it's so necessary to make that statement. I would, I would ask to modify my motion that it be placed on the agenda for January of the 11th.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, you accept that?
Yes, I do.
All right, so the motion has been changed. Mr. Levy has moved that we add discussion of the recently closed lawsuit to the agenda for the January 11th work session.
And Madam Chair, just for purposes of clarity for the minutes, my suggestion would be, I haven't researched Roberts rules on this specific issue, a motion can be withdrawn before a vote is taken. I think it would be, if Mr. Levy and Mr. Holmes are agreement, we could accept this as, that the motion was withdrawn, and in its place, Mr. Levy has made a separate motion to add this item to the agenda for the January 11th meeting.
So stipulated.
I think that's just for clarity and to reflect in the minutes.
Right, yeah. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just have one, two comments. One is, as everyone knows, the underlying lawsuit has been instilled. Anyone, any member of the public can go to the Moore County courthouse and get a copy of it. I believe that the public deserves an explanation. There's been extensive media coverage, so I'm in favor of adding this to the 11th January agenda.
Are there other comments? All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote. And we're still going to have to defer, I think, to Mr. Ramey as to what will be appropriate, and he will inform us of that during closed session next week as to what can actually be discussed in public. All those in favor of adding the item discussion of lawsuit LP versus Moore County Schools to the agenda for the Monday, January 11th board meeting will now vote. Ms. Caldwell, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Dennison.
Aye.
Ms. Hensley. Mr. Hensley, look at my list. Ms. Tom, Mr. Holmes, okay, my list is off, Mr. Holmes. Aye, I think he voted, he was muted, but I believe he voted aye. Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson. Chair also will vote aye, the motion carries 6-1. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, so moved, Madam Chair.
All right, the motion by Mr. Levy, the second by Ms. Thompson. Unless there is further discussion, anyone raise your hand? All right, then we will move to a vote to approve the agenda as amended. Now, Ms. Caldwell.
Aye.
Now, Mr. Dennison.
Aye.
Mr. Hensley. Mr. Hensley. Mr. Holmes. Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries seven, and just so we added an item 3C. All right, at this time, I would ask that Mr. Dennison lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Thompson, will you lead us in a moment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just want to have a moment of silence from everyone, please, at this time. Thank you.
Bob, excuse me just a second, Bob, can you mute your mic, please?
Want me to mute my mic?
Yeah. Okay, as we are ready to move into our pending action and discussion, I want to just make note that I appreciate all the members of the board and the staff for their participation in today's virtual meeting. And until further notice, all board work sessions and regular meetings will be held in virtual format. This decision was made for several reasons, and reasons have been shared with board members and upon social media. Just of note, our school protocol has always discouraged indoor gatherings of any size for adult employees, and especially gatherings that exceed 10 persons. We find that faculty meetings are held in a virtual format. Senior staff meetings are held in a virtual format. We take every opportunity we can to avoid close contact such that we might protect our employees.
Madam Chair.
I believe it's, I believe it's very hypocritical that we're allowing these students and teachers to go back to.
Mr. Holmes, you're out of order right now, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you.
Madam Chair, point of order. I move to overrule the ruling of the chair as to the place, time of meetings, that the meetings, in other words, the chair's rule that the meetings be virtual.
At this point, I'm making an announcement, and that is where we stand. Mr. Ramey, you can correct me if this needs to be done later. However, that's a different motion.
Well, I guess I'm struggling whether this is a point of order on a parliamentary decision. It seems to me that the chair's making an announcement. As I've already advised, the board can decide that it wishes to have its meetings in person instead of virtual, or vice versa. So certainly, that can be done by board action. It's possible also to revisit policies and procedures on delegations of authority. One thing I would just throw out there, there's a consideration, when, it's been the practice since the coronavirus pandemic has come out that the chair and superintendent have made an initial decision, at least, as to whether to notice the meetings virtually or in person. In part, I think, I think the rationale has been that the conditions can change, and the board only meets once a month or twice a month. And so having the ability to sort of make an initial determination without, in between board meetings and between those 30 days, has some value. The board could revisit that, could adopt a policy or revise policies, creating, you know, specific procedures. There's, it's a bit murky currently under policy as to how these things occur. But I guess, I'm not sure if this is a point of order on a parliamentary issue so much as a, an attempt to make a motion, I suppose, to.
Well, let's try it as a point of information, let's try it as a point of information. My point of information is, how do I, how do I make, and when in this meeting do I make a motion that the, that future meetings, including our meeting of January, I guess it's the 11th, be held in person rather than virtual? I thought I was going to wait until we did the agenda for the next, for the next meeting, which I thought was the appropriate place to do it, at the end of this meeting. But in view of this announcement that has been made, which looks to me like a ruling of the chair, I would think that it would be in order to do it as a ruling of the chair. I'll defer to anybody, I want to make the motion, and I want to speak to it. So I don't care when I do it.
Understood. My suggestion is certainly a motion of some sort is fine. Again, I haven't, not having anticipated this particular issue, I haven't researched the nuances of Roberts on this specific issue. I do, my suggestion would be just a motion to amend the, first of all, there would need to be a motion to amend the agenda that's already been approved, which at this point would require a second and a two-thirds vote to add action on changing the notice of the, for the next meeting, I suppose. That's probably how I would do it. A motion to amend the agenda, to add the item, to add discussion and action as to whether the board would return to an in-person meeting in January. The one consideration is that this meeting was noticed as a work session without action, so that would be a bit of a change in what was publicly noticed. I think it's better in general to take care of these things, you know, in advance so that it can be included in the notice. But if a board member wishes to make a motion to amend the, first, to amend the agenda, to add the item, and secondly, when we get to that place on the agenda, to make a motion to change the meeting schedule so that the next meeting will be, and subsequent meetings will be in person instead of virtual, then, you know, we would put that to a vote.
Well, so here's what I'm going to do.
Mr. Levy, I'm sorry, I was in the middle of speaking and did have the floor when Mr. Holmes interrupted me, and I would like to finish with my comments.
Okay, I'll defer.
Thank you. All right, as I was saying, our protocols have always discouraged indoor gatherings of any size for adult employees, and especially gatherings that exceeded 10 persons. School board, school faculty meetings, as well as senior staff meetings, are routinely done on a virtual platform. We have taken some risk with gatherings related to school board events, such as board work sessions and meetings, and public ribbon cuttings. Our willingness to take some measures, however, does not obligate the board to accept audience noncompliance with our COVID-19 restrictions. Our most recent experiences at in-person school board meetings produced an unacceptable level of audience noncompliance with, or even defiance of, our social distancing and face mask requirements. Those recent experiences left me with the choice of enforcing the requirements at future events and causing substantial disruption to meetings to bar noncompliant people from attending, or to shift the meeting platform to an all-virtual format. A member of the board has already noted his difficulty in understanding speakers when they are complying with our mask mandate. This virtual format eliminates this issue and allows all members to listen intently from the security of their homes or offices. The decision was not made lightly, and the reasons have been very well considered as we propose that the meeting today and next month, Monday's business meeting, both be considered on the virtual platform, and that we continue in a virtual meeting standpoint until further notice. All right, so that was my announcement.
Madam Chair, I guess I'll rise to, if I don't rise, I'll sit to a point of personal privilege. Since the chair has decided to make its case, I'd like to make my case for.
Privilege, though, Mr. Levy.
The privilege is that if the, if the chair decides to make an argument, which is not on the agenda, I might add, and the chair decides to go off the agenda with a, with an argument and a statement, I think I should have the privilege of countering that and saying why I think the chair is wrong. But if the chair wants to rule me out of order, rule me out of order. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, I don't care.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Levy. I think at this time, we really need to move on with our agenda, so I undertake a motion, or ask Dr. Grimsley to begin with our endorsement to gather public comment on updated plan for sustainable improvements.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I have a motion. Madam Chair, I have a motion.
At this moment, Mr. Levy, I'm talking. At this point, we went into.
My point of order. My point of order is, moving on is not an excuse for suspending our rules or proper parliamentary procedure. If Robert Levy has a point of personal order, he should be heard. Moving on is not an excuse to disobey the rules or the law, that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. I don't believe that we are disobeying the law, thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Ramey, would you like to weigh in on this?
Well, Mr. Levy has stated he wishes to make a motion to amend, we've already approved the agenda, so a motion to amend the agenda again, as I've stated, would require a two-thirds vote, a second and a two-thirds vote. I do think that, you know, that motion is in order at some point. I mean, there is a parliamentary rule, I'm just trying to look up the name of it, that is essentially to require following the agenda, and so that, you know, motions, so that motions don't come willy-nilly out of turn. In this case, though, it's, you know, it's before we've addressed the items on the agenda. Ideally, this motion would have been included as a motion to amend the agenda that was already ruled upon, but we are where we are. And my suggestion would be just for the sake of having members be heard and having decisions be made, just to hear the motion, see if there's a second, and take a vote on the motion.
Mr. Levy, might I ask, if your motion is going to be pertaining to going back to an in-person meeting on January 11th, might we just save that until the time when we set the agenda such that we can proceed and get through the items that we need to while we still have staff?
That is, that is fine. As a matter of fact, that's what I was going to do until the chair decided to make this argument and make this statement, which it really does upset me, it really does upset me that it wasn't on the agenda for the chair to do this. You know, and now I can't, and now I can't speak, but I'll go with that, I'll go with that.
Let us now move to the first item under pending action and discussion, endorsement to gather public comment. to gather public comments. Dr. Grimacy.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I was following the rule that I was muted, and I had to unmute myself. So just a friendly reminder to board members to please continue to mute yourself when you're not speaking, and then obviously unmute yourself when time comes for you to speak. Mr. Barath, are you tuned in here? I see you're muted, so let's get you unmuted.
I'm sorry, I am. I was just trying to make sure my slide presentation is viewed by all.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Chair, I'll defer to Mr. Barath for a presentation of information related to item 2A. We are going to be asking, this is under pending action. We haven't put the plan for sustainable improvements at the existing schools out for public comment for a couple of years. We did it the very first year we did it, and given my measure of the interests of the board, I thought maybe we would just go ahead and put this under pending action, do a presentation today, get some board input, put it out for a period of time of public comment, and then come back and seek the board's endorsement after you've had a chance to kind of look at the priority list over the next few weeks. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barath, and we'll be, we'll look forward to the board's further thoughts about this thereafter. John?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Madam Chair, board members, good afternoon. Today, as has been introduced, I'll be presenting to you information that has been shared each and every year, and most recently at the new board member orientation regarding our needs at existing school facilities. Something that's came up is, we've been doing this for so long, there's people that probably don't know why it's called a sustainable improvement plan. The reason for this is that the plan has been developed to sustain the operation of the schools with the annual allotment of funds every year, and that allows us to plan for the replacement of systems and components for decades to come that will result in schools that remain in condition for continual use. Did not advance, forgive me. There we go. A little background for everybody. This has been presented to the Board of Education annually since 2016, when we first developed this plan. It's been also included in each and every budget request the Board of Commissioners since 2017. Fortunately, in June 2020, the Board of Commissioners gave us just over $2.1 million in a one-time supplemental allotment to address some of our top priority needs. I'll be discussing more of that here in a little bit in this presentation. The plan does have over $73 million of needs in existing schools over the next 20 years. That number is also in today's dollar value. There is not an index to any escalation provided through the projection of the years. This is supported every year through the allocation of $750,000 in the county commissioners and local funding. The $750,000 is not distributed at one time, it is given monthly at a value of $62,500 throughout our operating school year. Approximately $850,000 comes from the North Carolina Education Lottery. These are done through quarterly appropriations, and the amounts vary each quarter. We use approximately 850 because it has fluctuated up and down in a range, and so for the purpose of planning, we have settled on $850,000. As a result of the annual allocation amounts and the plan, there is a need for an additional $1.9 million in funds to execute a plan to resolve all the projects over 20 years. And that puts them in a sustainable cycle, that as items fail over their life expectancy, there is funding and a plan in place to address it. There was one issue in here, and that was there are a lot of large-scale projects that require a large infusion of funds at a certain time. In 2016, we projected that need to be an opportunity in 2024. These needs are such as some of the gymnasiums at Carthage, at High Falls, that require air conditioning, window replacement, roofing replacement, lighting, etc., large cost projects, large roofing systems that end of life cycle are becoming, and it's being that the schools are so large, that's a huge cost associated with a roofing system and mechanical systems that reach their end of life. We have also noted at the bottom as a footnote, based on discussions with the board in December, that right now, there is not a plan identified for the activity bus replacement schedule. This is pending completion of a thorough staff review of all activity buses to be presented on or before March 1st. These will be updated into this plan, and the board will be notified how it would fit in on a schedule of needs. So to review with everybody how to read the attachment, it's about 52 pages, identifies the needs at each and every location. I have a sample here from Carthage Elementary School. So it identifies on the left side a category, and to give clarification, HSW stands for health, safety, or welfare of the occupants and beings. Needs are items that are in requirements but may not necessarily be regarded as a health, safety, or welfare need. The next area identifies the element of the need, whether it's a technology, security, mechanical, structural, or a site. Then the scope of work is what needs to be done. The requirement is why it needs to be done. And then the original request. This was the year that the request was originally presented in the first plan of the implementation of the 20-year execution. That's in there for just reference and historical. Then we have on the right side, the year funded. So this is when the project has received its funding, and it has been completed or is in the process of being completed. So you will see in that year funded column, some items and years that identify what's done. In this sample, those are all identified and circled with the red dashed line. You also note that under the budget column, near the last column to the right, there is no amount there because that has been funded and/or completed, and is no longer an identified need. So that is how you would read that sheet, and then at the very bottom, circled in blue there, is an identifier for the items that are referred to as a large, one-time, 2024 year possible funding need. The summary of our highest priority needs, total sheet here, identifies projects from, that were presented last year to the Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, and those are funded, and that's from the red line above. So all those items with that one-time allowance by the county commissioners of $2.1 million, those projects have been funded and some of which have been completed, meaning that the items below that red line now become our priority needs. The items that were above that line that county has funded, these are the details on what those 14 projects are in this instance here. The, there are seven projects that are not complete at this time and identified for summer 2021, because they require some design need to be done for system replacement, and the schools to be vacated for the work to be done of occupants, so systems can be shut down completely and replaced. One of the things I want to draw your attention here, too, for those that were not with us going through this process in the previous year, you will see on the list on the far left, near the bottom, Northmore High School lift station. That project was not one of the original top 14 needs of highest priority. High Falls Lift Station was identified as the most pressing need. Since this was present, at the time when this was presented, to when the funding was provided, the Northmore Lift Station had indicated that it is in the rate of failing faster than the High Falls Lift Station, and the High Falls Lift Station feeds into the Northmore Lift Station. And so had we fixed just the High Falls and not the Northmore, it would result in the potential risk of both schools having failed lift stations and not being able to be occupied. So the Northmore is originally the 15th priority need item, which just missed this list. This is the list of our highest needs for school facilities at this time. The items in here that are highlighted with a blue or gray-blue color across them are at the request of board member Levy. He asked that we identify items that are less than $100,000 on our highest priority needs. And so I have indicated those with that highlight color through here. One of the other things, just for continuity in here, you might see some instances on the representation of a school identifier for Carthage, and just to let you know, if you see the identifier CAR or CES, those are for Carthage Elementary School. I believe I may have caught all this, but if I missed something, someone I wanted to be aware which one that was, and CAM will always be Cameron. So if you see two designations for Carthage, just to be advised of what those are. One thing I do want to note in here, Pinecrest High School running track is in the top 10 category there. That track has been shut down for safety of participants and users of the track due to its failing surface. The Northmore track replacement is right at the bottom of the list. It is held up better, however, it has indicated signs of failure at some time, but the Pinecrest Track has accelerated to an immediate need there. Now, I want to talk to you about the available funds for capital needs at the schools. This is going to take you through a lot of information, so feel free, if at any time you have a question regarding any of this, please ask up, or speak up, I'm sorry. Currently, the North Carolina Lottery unallocated funds, as of November 2020, this is just a couple of months ago, is $2,544,220. There is a set-aside hedge fund for construction deficit, which we'll get into in the next slides, of 1.7 that's been identified. With our current distribution of lottery funds to the additional funds that would be anticipated to receive by July of 2021, there's another $400,000 between now and then that we would expect. And again, for the next year, we would, by July of 2022, expect an additional $850,000 of lottery allotments. That brings the projected lottery allotment by next year, 2022, July to over two, just over $2 million. The local capital fund, again, this is what comes from the Board of Commissioners for capital needs, is currently at about $933,000. In that, there is a set-aside for construction deficit of $400,000. We'll get another disbursement of projected capital funds for the next year of July 2021 through June 2022, of another $750,000, which by July 22 would make that potential of just under $1.3 million. We also have the sale of surplus properties that the board is in process of right now, and that's a range. Not everything is known at this time. So if we take a look at our current standing offers, they are $2.8 million to the appraisal amount of $3.698 million, somewhere in that range is the potential for surplus properties. The Southern Pines Elementary School project, which is just finished up and is going through its last items of acquisition for any furniture, fixtures, technology. The board will recall that at the time of the award of the Southern Pines Elementary construction, the projected budget for the scope of work underestimated the cost to develop the site and construction escalation that exceeded the projected value, and that was an amount projected to be $2,860,000. And to avoid any delays in additional cost escalation related to a redesign or rebuilding of the project, the Board of Education at that time established a set-aside fund in the amount of $2,117,828, and that is comprised, as the previous slide indicated, of the lottery amount and the local capital funds. And that was to offset this deficit. Now, with the project being Southern Pines Elementary School and the expenses winding down and the knowns becoming fixed and known, we've revised that deficit amount from $2.68 million to just over $1.7 million, a reduction of $975,000. That means that the remaining funds from Aberdeen Elementary Construction in the amount of $1,560,208, that's a result of unused contingency, construction escalation, purchasing of furniture, equipment, and technology. That surplus is applied to the deficit at Southern Pines Elementary. It reduces that amount to $144,792. So again, that goes from the 2.860 potential projected deficit down to $144,792. This slide is where we're going to demonstrate the current deficit of funding of the entire $103 million bond referendum as a whole to the three projects. The projected deficit for Pinehurst Elementary of $938,028, combined with the revised projected deficit of Southern Pines Elementary of just under $145,000, provides the total projected net deficit of $1,082,820. For those in math, that's about 1.05% of the bond amount. The set-aside fund, okay, to offset any deficit of $2,117,828 established by the board, is, exceeds the actual projected deficit of the $1,082,000 by $1,035,008. We project that there will be the set-aside funds, portions of that available to be applied to use at other school sites and capital needs. We will know better about that actual value as Pinehurst Elementary goes through its process of finalizing its costs for furniture, fixtures, equipment, technology, and completion of all construction-related activities. So in general summary, again, from the previous slides, projecting out towards July 2022, lottery funds of over $2 million available with the current set-aside allotment. Local capital fund by July 2022 of another 1.283 million. The sale of surplus property range from 2.8 to 3.7. And then the potential for the adjusted set-aside balance of approximately $1,035,000 will result by July of 2022, available funding of $7,194,400 to a potential high of $8,92,400. So with that, I'm here to respond to any questions you may have, and to help the board with any discussion of the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Barath. Quite a lot of numbers to get through. At this point, does anyone have specific questions for Mr. Barath? Mr. Levy, you're unmuted already. Do you have a question?
Let me defer to Mr. Holmes first, and then I have a question.
Let me call.
I'm sorry, is he muted?
He's unmuted. Try again. They're not hearing you, though. You are unmuted. Mr. Echol, a suggestion?
I'm not sure. It might be an issue with his AirPods.
Well, maybe while they're trying to do that, I can ask a question. Maybe, is that okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Levy.
Okay. Mr. Barath, I'm a real simple man, just a poor country lawyer from Los Angeles. But I had, I had asked you about a month ago in an email to give me four lists. One list said was our overall needs of 10 things, which were under $100,000. Another list of 10 things that were over $100,000, and all in order of necessity. I then asked you for two more lists. One of five things, under $100,000. One of five things under $100,000 and five things over $100,000, which in order of necessity, which we needed to do in order to make repairs and buy things and the like. I did this first on December 10, and I was told by the chair that there wasn't enough time. I then did it, I think it's December 17, hoping to get my four lists. And what I got was this giant list of loads of different things, but not specifically, I think I also need to say, that the second set of two lists was for our northern schools, okay, for the five things of our northern schools above $50,000, above $100,000, five things of our northern schools below $100,000. The reason why I wanted to do that was because of simplicity, because I think the public deserves to know what we need to do, and reading this thing is just daunting. And number two, I need to know where you're focused at the 10 most important things and the five most important things for our northern schools, which tend to be ignored, especially with the building of these three giant schools in the southern part of the county. So when can I get my four lists, my four simple lists?
I believe, and I, do I still have control of the screen?
Yes, you do. If I might, Mr. Levy, actually, your questions guided the presentation. I believe that what you have in front of you here on Slide 6 certainly gets you, the shading gets you those project, this is the priority list, so you start at the top and you go most, what the staff has evaluated as the highest priority would be the New Century and High Falls projects. And then you move down from there. One can expand that, make it bigger. Those projects that are shaded are the ones that are under $100,000, and that is done specifically because of your request. I think if you look on here, you're going to see if you don't have 10 Northern Moore projects, I think you're pretty close to getting 10. I wouldn't count them, but I was, when I proof read this, I thought there were 10 Northern Moore projects on this list. The hope was is that we could provide something that would meet the needs of everybody absent our ability to have seven different reports for seven different board members. The idea was to have something that would incorporate what you were looking for in that, which also offers the bigger picture for those that would want more detail than that. So forgive us if we missed the mark in that, but our intention nobly was to try to accommodate what you needed and still provide the broader picture, which the broader public's going to want to see.
If I had your spreadsheet, I might be able to do that, but this would require, in order to create that, in order to let the public know, just our 10 biggest priorities in the north, and our 10 biggest priorities overall. And to make it simple, so the public can see that, and especially the people in the northern part of the county can see that we're going to work on those. And we might even put some of those ahead of some of the things in the southern part of the county. Those, I think, are important. I still, since you have command of the spreadsheet, I'd still like to see those four lists. It would probably take about five minutes, maybe 15 minutes, to do that. And I would hope that that can be done, and that I think that can be published and sent to the public. The second thing which really does concern me is that I've read that, for instance, on one of these priority lists, there's a need for 50 cameras on the buses. And there's also a need for us to create a priority list for replacing activity buses. I'd like to know why, in this world, it was recommended last time to go out and buy a brand-new activity bus, at a time when there are no activities going on, I might add, but to buy a brand-new activity bus before we had a plan for replacing the activity buses and before we even have the money for cameras on the buses that we have. I'm sorry, but when I was reading through this, if I'm getting emotional, it's because I don't understand this form of management. Somebody enlighten me.
I just want to make sure I'm not out of order. I just want to know, what is the precedent of a bus over the repair of these schools? Dr. Grimsey, if you can just answer that one question, that's all, if you can, I just need to know how it takes precedent over the repairs of our school.
Okay, well, I get the chair's permission because you're asking me to relitigate a decision made by the board a month ago, so Madam Chair, with your permission, I-
Go right ahead, Dr. Grimsey.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. You know, I think what we stated last month, which was acceptable to some board members and not acceptable to some others, was that the presence of the funding that we received, which is funding that's not as predictable from year to year for our federally connected students, came in higher than what we had anticipated last year. And again, I'm going to state something that was litigated last month. Some of you agreed with it, some of you didn't. So I'm just repeating what I said last month, which some of you didn't accept then, and I don't expect you to accept it now. But it was funding that, from year to year, and we'll make this more clear as we get into the budget process, that federally connected students, the impact aid associated with federally connected students, is an amount of money that, from year to year, may or may not be predictable. So this was a funding source that was available. It normally isn't available. And it was through what's called fund aid. It's on the operational side of the budget ledger. What we're looking at here are capital projects that we align with capital funding. And what we've attempted to do in this presentation today is map out the capital revenues that are tied to capital expense. Now, you can cross over operational revenues to capital expense, but you do so as part of the annual budget process. So in between, if you find, if you find, if I might, if you find, for example, that a lift station that is a higher priority, lift station A is a higher priority than lift station B, but if lift station B actually fails and lift station A can limp along, then there's got to be some discretion along the way to switch those to expense items. Likewise, on the revenue side, occasionally you are able to get a grant or you have a grant source that yields more money than what you anticipated, then the staff can bring to the board the possibility of looking at that as an opportunity to act on a need that's been sitting out there for some time that really hasn't fallen onto the radar screen of any of your other priority considerations. The board can elect not to do that. The staff rests with that. In this case, the board elected to do that, and, you know, I hope I've done justice to your question.
Hold on a second, Bob. So let me ask you this. If it fluctuates from year to year, this year we got $73,000. I was looking at that list, and I could have repaired four or five things with that money. It's hard for me to justify where you're coming from. Okay, so the timing is, I don't get, because the last meeting, we voted on a bus. I think we should have just held off on the bus, revisited these buildings, and then decide, instead of just deciding, okay, we're going to buy a bus. Great. Anyway, I mean, we-
The public record is clear on that. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to debate, you know, I respect your opinion on that. I think tonight's presentation is about the capital revenues that we have and the capital priorities that we have. Should the board want to add activity buses to this list in future to avoid this type of occurrence, as was recommended by everybody last month, we're happy to do that.
It really doesn't matter. The only thing is, is that it's just, it's frustrating to see the way this is going. We're going to get outvoted anyway, but it needs to be made known that the priorities are out of, they're not, this is no way to run anything.
So are you criticizing the priorities that are presented here and suggest that North, New Century and-
Excuse me, excuse me, just, excuse me, please don't-
I just want to be clear on this.
Yeah. So just as I reiterated, the repairs would take precedent over a school bus, an activity bus.
And all good and well, Mr. Holmes, but that has been done, so-
I understand.
All right. Let me put it, let me put it in other way. Let me put it another way.
Well, let me finish, Mr. Levy. What we want is questions to help you understand the current capital improvement summary that is before you now, because these are things that we must address, and the material's being presented to you now such that we can discuss how we're going to go about doing this. And the message that would come up is to open this for public comment starting next week. So we need board comment this week.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but as part of the discussion, I think this is relevant. I know we already voted on it, but this is relevant.
Mr. Levy?
My concern is more from a management standpoint. It doesn't matter to me what we did last week or the week before or whatever, that decision was made. I'm concerned about, as we go on, that I'm going to get a recommendation, I'm talking about, this is administrative, that we're going to get a recommendation to do something like buy a bus before we have a plan, which Mr. Barath went over, we're supposed to be doing a plan for replacement of our buses, or we're going to get a plan to buy a bus before we have the money to put cameras on our existing buses. As I say, you know, I don't understand from a management standpoint why we would recommend certain repairs, and I hope that I won't see any recommendations for certain investments in the future before we have a plan in place to make the repairs. That's the only, that's the only thing.
Madam Chair, this is it. May I make a comment?
Yes, I'll make the same.
I think, we have to get to the bottom of this. We have this list here of priorities to do. We don't know if we're going to get the money to do them all or not. The public needs to understand that the county commissioners are statutorily responsible for all our maintenance and capital needs. So they're the ones that you should be talking to if you need to get stuff done. We're having to do all this, move all this stuff around because we're not getting the money we really need to do stuff, when it's their responsibility. So if anybody's complaining about the condition of our schools, they need to go to the commissioners, not to the school board. We tried for several years to get it done, and it has not happened.
Well, here's the thing. So we've already addressed the school bus issue, right? That money, how much, I mean, I've already mentioned how much money that could have been for capital improvements, Mr. Venison, but this, it's, this whole thing is out of whack.
Madam Chair, may I make a, I just need clarification from Mr. Barath. This is Pam. John, in looking at your list that you have on the screen, I want to be clear that the outline that you have given us is prioritized, number one, so that the first one with regard to the upgrade of the pump station, that is high priority, and it goes down to the bottom of these 37 or so items. Is that correct?
Ms. Thompson, that is correct. And as Dr. Grimsey outlined, we do ask that there is some flexibility provided that should an item or element show an imminent failure sooner than projected, that we'd be able to move it up.
Okay. And then the items that you have highlighted in blue were the ones that fell down under the $100,000 range. Is that correct? That's what the highlight means. Is that correct?
That's correct. That identifies all the projects that are under $100,000 on this list.
Okay. So out of the packet that you provided us, this one list dated January 4, project priority, this will be the list of items going forward that we will be working from. Is that correct?
This is, right now, the recommended list for public feedback and board feedback on as far as priorities of projects.
Okay. Thank you.
John, on that, I'm sorry, on that questionnaire that you guys are going to be sending out, is there anywhere to put a blank one so people can write in something?
We will provide an area for notes so they can recommend something, correct.
Okay. And then one more question. I'm not sure what a V A V daper is. What is that? A VAV daper?
Affordable Air Volume Unit Damper.
Oh.
It's a mechanical system component. I apologize for stopping those in there. The people at Impacts are very wary.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks.
It's okay.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of-
Other questions? Mr. Hansley?
So most of these are probably most appropriate for Mr. Barath to answer, but some, perhaps the superintendent or yourself. So my first question is, what action and/or decision are we, as a board, expected to make next Monday, next Monday's meeting, inserting this?
We are seeking a recommendation to the superintendent to ask the board for an endorsement to allow us to publish this for public comment from January 12 to January 26, bringing the results back to the board at its February work session for consideration to adopt.
And the board, may Mr. Hansley all add, if you're looking at this list and you see something from the master list that maybe should be put on this list in addition, what we try to do is look at what the ceiling was. If we were to get the appraised value for all of the buildings, for example, what are the funds that we might have at our disposal over the next 18 months? And that's at the high end, that's 8. something million. So that was sort of where we drew a line to pull out what we saw were the priorities and over the next 18 months. This would guide the staff's decisions. Obviously, if there are going to be major changes in between, we'd come back, talk to the board about that, or if there were modest changes that were, you know, very, we could report after the fact. But the board might want to weigh in, the public might see something that we're missing, or maybe you all might want to move this around a little bit if you want, but this is where the staff would stand today as to what we've determined the priorities to be.
Understood. Thank you. My next question. Mr. Barath, did I hear you correctly, that site preparation for Southern Pines Elementary was $2.8 million?
Between for the construction, the project, it was a combination of the site and the escalation figure that was applied. Escalation and construction exceeded the value we had placed in as a projection.
Do you know, do you know approximately how much was spent on site preparation?
I do not have that detailed number available at me, but I can get it to you.
Thank you. Have there been any discussions with the Moore County Commissioners on the reprogramming of the $1.5 million from the underrun of Southern Pines Elementary and using that money for Southern Pines Elementary? I may have misspoken. The underrun of Aberdeen Elementary and applying that money to Southern Pines Elementary?
It was originally our intention to bring that to the school board's attention. There was some discussion between John's office and Caroline's office, where Caroline and Wayne had asked us to prepare two of these slides to present to the commissioners on the day after your meeting today. And John was secure enough with what the final outcome was at Aberdeen, that out of respect to the commissioners, we introduced that to them, and I don't know what the final status is. It wasn't showing on their agenda as of Friday. It looked like they might add that, but that was timed to be after the work session today.
Okay. Thank you.
And all that will be, by the way, Mr. Hansley, I guess the word is amendment. Mr. Vest used a different word, but there's a formal action they have to take to authorize the rollover of that Aberdeen surplus to other bond-related expenses.
Understood, because it's all bond money.
Yes, correct.
So, Mr. Barath, it's my understanding that these budgeted amounts are based upon industry estimates, not actual quotes. Is that correct?
From the original projection, were you talking about current costs? I'm a little confused.
Sorry, I shifted gears. I'm talking about the, no, no, no. I'm talking about the previous slide, the repairs.
That's the one.
The budget amount. Those are not actual quotes. Those are estimates based upon your experience.
Based upon our experience, uh, experience of maintenance operations. Some of them involved engineers, uh, giving us budget outlier, outlines for the scope of work to be provided.
Okay. So, once we move into the quoting process, how are these requests for quotes published?
There are statutory requirements for, uh, costs that fall within a range, that they're done through, can be done through an informal process, which means that we can issue a request to certain contractors or vendors to provide or to install, and then those are assessed, and then a recommendation is brought to the board if it exceeds $50,000 for the board to approve such agreement for service or work. Anything that above a threshold identified by the statutes requires a, uh, what they call a public and competitive bid, which means that it is posted and advertised, uh, for, uh, anyone to come in and bid and perform on that. Some of the intentions we have with, as we've executed through some of our other smaller projects that are within the informal, uh, with our local contractors and vendors, and those that have also done, uh, work in good order with Moore County Schools.
And where do you normally publish those opportunities that exceed that threshold?
If they're over the threshold limit by, uh, general statutes to be published, we go in our local pilot and in the News Observer, which are some of the larger publications, and some of our engineers have affiliations with contracting publication services where they will also post it.
In addition to that, do we have an outreach to ensure that local businesses are notified of these opportunities and have an opportunity to submit offers?
Through the informal process where we solicit directly to any of them, we do make an effort to make sure we reach out to local. And the general public, uh, advertisement ones, it is open to all. And so we can just notify anyone that it is out there, and that they can solicit or submit a quote.
John, if somebody asks you that they want to be, um, available to receive this information, is there a, a place where, where all, any, any local contractors can make sure that they get notification?
They can reach out to myself or even to, uh, Bradley Garner, our Director of Maintenance Operations, to introduce themselves, themselves to be known, get, uh, understand their qualifications and their scope ranges to provide bonding and insurance. And that also dictates the scale of the projects they may be able to do. But yes, they are always welcome to reach out.
Mr. Barath, that, that was, um, actually one of my questions with regard to our local businesses. In the past, uh, have you found them to be, uh, have, have we used them, or their prices competitive to where we, we are able to use them versus going outside?
It is varied, and I would say, more times than not, our local has been very competitive.
Right.
Also found that a lot of local businesses, depending on the size and scale of the project, cannot receive the required bonding for it. They have a threshold that they cannot exceed, uh, and that is just scale of the project and scope of it has, uh, left them out of it. But, uh, majority of the times, on the previous work that we were talking about is performed by local. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Barath, uh, can you, are you able to get me, uh, this list in a spreadsheet format, either Microsoft or something popular that I can use, so that I can manipulate it?
I can definitely do that.
Okay, I appreciate it if you'd email that to me, or, or, or send it, uh, by, by some means. I appreciate it.
Can do.
And we'll provide that to the whole board. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, while we were discussing, I, I looked over the list. We have 37, as Ms. Thompson accurately, you must have counted them, Ms. Thompson, but, uh, 37 items that are listed on this list. 15 of them involve, uh, at least one or more Northmore School. So 15 of the 37 involve a Northmore School.
I, I, I appreciate that, Dr. Grimsey, because we, we have to, uh, understand, um, that the people in the northern part of the county and central part of the county are concerned, uh, that they want to have schools which are as nice as some of the schools that we built in the southern part of the county. And I understand that we can't always build them, build every school everywhere. I wish we could, but, uh, you know, I want to make sure that their, um, that, that their voices are heard, and I see that you're doing that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
And, and thank you, uh, Dr. Grimsey. I had actually, um, saw that as well, so I appreciate, um, you, you taking care of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
So really, the only recommendation, Madam Chair, would be just the board endorsing, uh, the staff going forward and, and, uh, putting out an invitation for those that, that would be interested, that they'd like to weigh in on this week, and provide them with a portal and report back to the board at your next meeting. It's a little bit unusual that we do that, but it's also good to do that every, at least, at least every couple of years.
Well, as always, we appreciate the great improvement that we make within our school system. Um, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Barath and his keeping up with what's going on, because it's a massive undertaking, um, for a very small staff to keep up with all these repairs and without adequate funds to do them just immediately. So we, we do appreciate that. Um, at this time, let's take a, a five-minute, uh, break, give everybody a chance to get up and stretch. It is 4:31. We'd be back at 4:36. Mr. Eklund, can you accommodate that?
A reminder, everybody to mute.
Yeah. Madam Chair, should, should we make, make a motion and vote on this particular one before we break?
No, sir. It doesn't require, that would be next week.
I'm getting ready to take the stream down if you're, if you're all ready.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay, we are back live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Uh, all right, we'll now return to pending action and discussion. Moving on to item 2B, the offer to purchase Southern Pines Elementary School.
Yeah, Madam Chair, well, with this presentation, I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Barath and Mr. Ramey to, um, report back to the board on the, uh, the, uh, direction and authorization you provided to the staff and legal counsel last month. Um, I don't know who, I know you two have talked, uh, Mr. Ramey, Mr. Barath, I don't know who goes first, so.
I think we'll let John take the lead. I'm available for legal questions as they arise.
Very good.
And I might remind people to mute, please, if you're not speaking.
Thank you. Uh, board members, for the next item here, with the offer to purchase Southern Pines Elementary School, as you recall, at your last meeting, you directed staff and legal counsel to engage in negotiations with the representatives of Moore Montessori Community School for the purchase of the already, uh, vacated Southern Pines Elementary School site. And that was for an amount of $1.6 million as a minimum, and other terms and conditions, as were deemed advisable. And even though, uh, there's a lot of challenges with having dialogue over a holiday of Christmas and New Year's, uh, there was, uh, discussions that continued to take place, uh, between staff, Board of Attorney, and the representatives of Moore Montessori Community School. And attached to this summary are copies of the original initial purchase offer by Moore Montessori, which the board had seen last month, and the counteroffer that was drafted and issued, uh, by legal counsel and staff. Some of the important elements within the, uh, counteroffer that I want to bring to your attention, uh, many of them were discussed during our last board meeting. Uh, as a requirement that Moore Montessori provide, uh, school board with an opinion of council letter that certifies they are a government unit in accordance with the general statutes and are therefore eligible to purchase the site without competi- uh, competition, we all believe that this would not be an issue that would create heartache for either party to fully execute. Another item, number two, is Moore Montessori's agreement entered to a separate indemnification agreement that is acceptable to the Superintendent, Board Attorney, that assumes responsibility for any third-party claims against the board as related to the board's decision to accept their offer and to forego com- competition and competitive process to sell directly to Moore Montessori. The third one is a provision that we, Moore County Schools, provide all environmental assessments, such as reports on any asbestos-containing materials at the school, uh, to Moore Montessori prior to the closing. The fourth one is a stipulation that any rent or other income derived from the use of the site by Moore Montessori will be used exclusively for public school purposes. These would be elements that would be, uh, inclusive of maintenance, capital improvements that are reasonably designed to facilitate the use as a public school. The last item is regarding the resale that has been discussed of some or part, uh, part or all of the site. Buy more Montessori and provide Moore County Schools with a portion of the process, of the profits that would be determined along a sliding scale that's developed if the property or a portion of is sold within 15 years of the purchase. Complicated language of that is included in the offer that we countered with as the last item of the, uh, document. And as of the date, the summary was posted. We were still awaiting a response from representative of Moore Montessori. There has been ongoing, uh, discussions with Mon- Moore Montessori Legal Counsel and Staff, and we do anticipate having a proposed final agreement for the board's consideration at its meeting next week. And Neil, Ramey, and I are here and available to respond to any questions you may have.
And, and John, if I could, if I could just, um, add a little footnote here, just the latest, um, update on this. Um, you know, we, we were up against the holidays during these negotiations, so we had a little gap there where nobody was available over the rest of the month. Um, but we have moved things along pretty well. I did get a response today from, uh, Moore Montessori's attorneys. Haven't had a chance to fully study it, but it looks like their edits to our proposal are fairly minimal. For the most part, the substantive issues appear to be, um, perhaps some negotiation as to the length of time during which there would be the sliding scale profit sharing, and also some, uh, changes to clarify the intent of the indemnification agreement. As you, uh, may recall, you know, we just used the same indemnification agreement that we had proposed with the land trust, uh, for, for the per- possible purchase of Southern Pines Primary, and my understanding of the concerns expressed about that are not really substantive so much as clarifying the original intent. So I think we're, we're very close to, uh, fully resolving those issues and do expect to have a, um, agreement that would be acceptable to staff and legal counsel to bring, uh, to you for your January meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey and Mr. Barath. So, uh, are there questions pertaining to this? Uh, I already see Mr. Levy has got his green light on. Um, Mr. Levy, you want to start us off?
Sure. Uh, number one, as I explained to the, um, as I explained to, um, uh, the board the last time, there should be a covenant running with this land, which says that it will be used for purposes of education, um, in perpetuity. Um, I don't intend to make the, um, the school wealthy, because I think what is likely to happen at the end of 15 years, or 14 years or 13 years, because under the plan that's outlined there, the last few years are de minimis in terms of, in terms of a loss of money should they desire to sell the school. And in 15 years, that's probably about the amount, about the time that we're going to need the school, uh, to, um, uh, to, if, if, if they don't want it, for us to expand either Pinecrest or some additional, uh, elementary or, uh, or, or, or a middle school. I think we're in a pretty strong position here, and I'm not sure that we're negotiating out of a strong position. Strong position is that if they don't want to take our terms, they can go to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners can order us to lease the property. If the county commissioners order us to lease the property, why, then we simply retain the property anyway, which is fantastic. The county commissioners understand we can't use the money to, um, to, to, uh, improve, uh, the existing schools, so hopefully they would have to, uh, come up with some additional money, uh, for repairs. So, we're kind of in the catbird seed, but I think we're, we're negotiating like we're not, and that concerns me. So I, I would like to know, number one, was that proposed that the, and, 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 and did they reject that? And if so, why didn't we just walk off the table?
So I, I can, I can address that to some extent. That, we, we did have So I can, I can address that to some extent. We did have some discussions with Moore Montessori as to whether they would be amenable to, you know, a reversion. I think it's either Mr. Hensley or Mr. Levy had suggested a right of reversion where the property would automatically go back to Moore County Schools, you know, without any, any compensation if the site were not to be used for educational purposes. They did reject that out of hand, and the explanation frankly made sense to me, which is, it's difficult to anticipate the needs related to a school site, you know, many years down the road. So I think they, they have not objected in principle to the idea that it would be unfair for them to profit off of the sale, that, you know, if you might make more through upset bids, that they could essentially flip the site in a short period of time to make a profit. That's why we ended up with this profit sharing provision. But I think their, their essential point is that, you know, many years down the road, who's to know whether that's going to be suitable as a site for a school? There could be change in, in the, in the area, there could be factors we can't anticipate, and generally, covenants that run with the land in perpetuity are disfavored in the law precisely because of that, because they can hinder land use. So another factor we took into account here, too, is I think some members, you know, again, we're trying to sort of take into account a lot of individual criteria that were expressed at the last meeting as opposed to a consensus view of the board, but I think there was concern about constitutional issues and the notion of the property being put for, to the use of public education. My understanding is Moore Montessori is subject to the same constitutional obligations that apply to the school, to the Board of Education, which is that either the site must be used for public education or the proceeds from the sale must be used for public education. So to the extent that's the concern, I'm not sure if that was Mr. Levy's point or not, but it had been expressed previously. I think we're already covered there under, under, you know, the law. In other words, Moore Montessori couldn't sell the property and then, you know, go on a cruise or enrich themselves personally. The pro-sale proceeds would, could only be used for public education purposes, perhaps buying another school site, et cetera.
Well, my, my concern is not that they would enrich themselves. My concern is twofold. Number one, the neighborhood and the people who we represent on the board want to make sure that that site is not used for condominiums and the like, that it is used for public education. Number two, we have invested in it for purposes of public education, and I'm not so much saying a reverter, but a covenant running with the land that says that it must be used for education, well, if it can't be used in perpetuity, and by the way, you know, it seems to me a little bit anomalous that this 1924 deed is so powerful on the Southern Pines Primary School, but it would just never work for the Southern Pines Elementary School. Just, that seems to me to be anonymous, just seems to me to be a problem. I personally believe that we should tell them that either you're going to use it, and we're going to have a covenant running with the land, to make sure that the, the land is used for education purposes, okay? And they can do with it what they will. They can send it, sell it to another educational institution if they so desire. But what I don't want to see happen is in the 14th year, give us a half a million dollars and build condos on the land, and then find a place out between Aberdeen and Pine Bluff to, to create a new school and, and thereby profit from it in that regard. I want to see, this is my personal preference, I want to see a school on that property in Southern Pines for as long as possible. And if it's maybe, we'll tell them if it's for 100 years, it's for 100 years. But you can tell them that at least one board member certainly disfavors going down below 15 years, and one board member believes it should be, and it should be, and for 100, or at least in perpetuity, because our job is to educate children. And if we're selling that property without a guarantee that's going to be used to educate children, we're not doing a service. But more than a negotiating standpoint, let me just say that we should be a lot tougher, and we, and by the way, the person that wins a negotiation is he, is he or she that's willing to walk off the table. And so I would hope that we'd be a lot tougher in our negotiation stand. I'll submit that.
I understand. If I may, Madam, just very briefly comment, Madam Chair, and I promise not to, not to monopolize the conversation, but completely understand that. I just want to add that I'm quite confident staff and, and I, in speaking for staff and for myself, we'd be more than happy to go back to Moore Montessori with changes to the agreement if there's a consensus among the board as to, you know, this or any other change. And that's part of the reason we have these work session discussions. What, what's difficult and problematic for us is to try to negotiate Mr. Levy's request, Ms. Thompson's request, Ms. Carter's request, as individual members. So my request to the board would be, this is a good opportunity for you to discuss these things, and, you know, it doesn't require formal action. We're not asking you to approve an agreement, but just, you know, sort of thumbs up consensus as to any major changes in direction. We do have another week to try to iron things out before your meeting and accommodate the preferences of the board.
All right, Mr. Ramey, let me stop. We've lost Mr. Holmes, and Mr. Eklund, I believe, is working with him to, to get him back on. I think he indicated that he could still hear us, but he's having trouble logging back in, so he will be joining us again. To segue off what Mr. Levy has said, I think I asked this before, but I never did get an answer on it. What happens when a charter school goes bottom up? What happens to the property that they own from building to furnishings? Does it revert to the state? Does it revert to the local school system? What would be our claim on the property if for some reason a charter school ceased to exist?
I do not know what happens if a charter school loses its charter. I do not know the answer to that question, but that's worth considering, and we can certainly look into that.
That, that is something I'd like to know, because along with Mr. Levy, you know, if it's gonna go non-existent, I don't want to know that the state then is going to take that property and be able to sell it for a residential development or something else along that lines. I'd like to know that if the school ceases to exist, then the property would revert back to the Moore County Schools. And I don't know if there's a possibility of linking a contract in that way, but I'd certainly like to know that answer before we proceed.
Certainly be happy to look into that, Madam Chair. One, one possibility, if, again, if, if there's a consensus on the board, you know, I'm not sure how easy it will be to get a direct answer to your question. There may or may not be statutes that directly say what happens. Is there an SGE to the state, or what happens with charter school property if they lose their charter? If it's not a simple answer to the question, it might be something that we could handle contractually as opposed to, you know, answering the underlying legal question. In other words, something like what you said, a reversion or some sort of, you know, mechanism in the contract for what happens if, if they lose their charter. And I don't know what Moore Montessori would agree to, but we can certainly ask for an automatic reversion to Moore County Schools and start from there and see where we go.
I would appreciate your looking into that. Are there other questions for Mr. Barath or Mr. Ramey?
Madam Chair, I have a few, I have a couple of comments.
And Mr. Hensler.
So, as everyone knows, for reasons I've previously stated, there's no bigger supporter for Moore Montessori and their, on their board than me. But I have concerns about our, like Mr. Levy, I have concerns about our previous or our current offer, specifically the 15-year provision v. the used in perpetuity for free public education. I was very consistent in the last two meetings, talking about two restrictive covenants placed upon the deed. One is used in perpetuity for free public education, and the other one is the disposition of any rental income or any other income. So let me briefly discuss both of them. You know, again, no bigger supporter here, but we're here to protect the taxpayers and the students, not potentially enrich or subsidize Moore Montessori School. It's easy to envision scenarios where we can get played in this transaction, and that's why I insist that it be used in perpetuity for free public education. In addition to the scenario that Mr. Levy described, I'll describe another one. Moore Montessori stated current plan is, is to occupy the back L-shaped building and renovate that, and then take the May Street Building and rent that out to tenants and use that money to fund renovations. That's great, as long as they, the goal, and they continue to use it for free public education. However, it is easy to envision a scenario where they lease out that May Street Building to other nonprofits, other businesses. They convert, you know, one thing they've looked at is converting it to condos and leasing it out. That's fine, as long as that money's used for capital improvements, and eventually that building gets used for education. But here's an easy scenario that's, that would be in the back of my mind if I'm buying that property. I lease out that main, that May Street Building, I take the rents, I pour it into capital improvements, making it condos, either personal condos or business condos, and in the 15th year, I sell that building for $15 million, and it's never, not once, used for education. That's not what I want, and I'm quite sure that's no one, what no one on the Board of Education wants. There's other scenarios that with a little thought you could envision. So those scenarios can be prevented from being played out by protecting that property, by adding the deed covenant that they're forever used for free public education. The second, the second issue I want to discuss is rental and other income. When I, when we talked about this previously, I discussed that any rental income, and I encourage them to get rental income, I understand that they're starting with 100 students, and then once they occupy it, they'll expand to 200 or 200 students in the L-shaped building, and then the, once they're ready to take that step and, and convert the May Street Building and grow into that, they'll have 700 students. What a great deal. But it's not, it's not my, it's not my intention, and I don't believe it's anyone else's intention, for them to take that, that income from rent and use that to subsidize their operations because, just like Moore County Schools, they already get state and local funding to fund their operations. That's why I proposed that any rental income be used for capital improvements to the property. That way, it's funding the capital improvements to the property, not their operations. And those capital improvements, they benefit Moore Montessori, they protect the interests of, of Moore County Schools, because Moore County Schools, by having that deed restrictions, forever has an interest in that property. And thirdly, it, it supports the community to ensure that they have adequate money, and they're spending that money on capital and site improvements, not to subsidize their operations. So I ask that, that those two changes be made and the negotiations be reset to used in perpetuity for free public education, and any rental income or other incomes be used for capital improvements for the property. Otherwise, this will not have my support.
And thank you. Mr. Hensler, that's helpful. I appreciate your feedback. Just wanted to point to your attention, you've probably noticed this already, there is a provision in the, in the latest version of the contract on rental income, but it is, and it restricts Moore Montessori's use of any rental income. I'll just read from it, it's very short. "Any and all rental income and/or other income derived by buyer, which is Moore Montessori, from the property shall be used exclusively for public school purposes, including but not limited to any expenditures on capital improvements, renovations or maintenance of the property that are reasonably designed to facilitate its use as a public school site." That's not exactly what you said. It, what, what we tried to do there was to, you know, note that the, the improvements, that the rental income can be used only for public school purposes. I had understood your main point at the last meeting to be concerns about money going outside of public education. You supported public charter schools and wanted to see that, and, and so I may have misunderstood the, the main thrust of that, but it also, what we, the language we currently have, and again, it's the board's pleasure, this is the purpose of the work sessions, to get your feedback. But the, what we had stipulated was capital improvements were certainly a legitimate use of the funds, but only those that are reasonably designed for the use of the property as a public school, not re, not renovating buildings for, to be used as commercial properties to make money. That was, that was our, you know, effort to accommodate the concerns expressed at the meeting, but again, we certainly welcome feedback from the board on these points.
Yeah, and if I could respond real quick.
David, can I ask you a question about what you said real quickly? Because I have to agree, I think we need to look a little more carefully at what might happen to it. How would we be able to police them to know that money that came in in rents was used for, not for operational, but for capital improvement? How, how would we be so involved in their finances, I guess, to find that out?
If we had reasons to be concerned, we would have the right to audit their books because we would be a party holder to that agreement.
Okay.
And to Mr. Ramey's statement, yes, I'm specifically objecting to the language that's in there because I think it's too broad, that even though you used as examples capital improvements, it leaves open the opportunity for them to use it to fund their operations. And that's specifically what I don't want them to do, because, again, like us, they receive county and state funding to fund their, their school operations.
Madam Chair, this is Pam, and I certainly agree with what David is suggesting.
Madam, Madam Chair, just one suggestion that the, that the council may look at. Get rid of the words including but not limited to, and put in something like specifically only, or something like that. This and only this, something like that. I think council understands what I'm talking about.
I do, and I certainly don't have any objections from any, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see any legal problems with the board suggesting. I don't know how Moore Montessori would respond, but if it's, if there's a consensus of the board to, you know, I think that's, I was thinking exactly along those lines, Mr. Levy strike, including but not limited to, replace it, you know, with specifically to include only, something to that effect, stipulate that the rental income can be used only for the capital improvements, and I think otherwise the language is there.
And, and maybe you can also become an expert on the rule against perpetuities, but we'll leave that for another time.
I've already looked up. I'm happy to talk about it in the next work session.
Okay, fine.
So, Mr. Ramey, where does this leave us for next week? Will we be receiving by email an updated contract to examine between now and next week? Well, will we be looking next week at just simply examining a contract and then putting it on a February agenda? What is our procedure?
I think it's, I can't speak for the folks at Moore Montessori. They've been responsive so far and good to work with. You know, we did, as I mentioned, we had the holidays that got in the way of the last month here that we had to work with, was not really a full month. I think it's, and given the progress we've made and looking over their edits, don't seem to be too onerous. I think it's realistic to expect we could get, you know, fully negotiated agreement for the board's approval in, at the January meeting. I guess I would just ask for, for clarity as to whether there's a consensus of, of the board to make any of these changes that have been addressed, and maybe it would help to enumerate them and just get the thumbs up consensus, because I don't want to, you know, it just doesn't feel right to me to be negotiating on behalf of the school system and in behalf of the board when I only know that I'm advocating for the interest of one or two board members. So, but with some, some direction from the board, certainly happy to go back and revisit anything. The more, obviously, the more we ask, the more substantive the revisions, the more likely that they, they may need more time, but that's okay. I mean, we don't, we don't need to be in a hurry to get this done, and I'm certainly, you know, happy to take any feedback from the board as to what we do next.
Could we scroll back up so that we might see those stipulations that were already listed? Yeah, the one, two, three, four, five, okay. So Mr. Levy is our resident attorney here. Just going through them, can we, can we work toward a consensus on the ones that are there?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I, if I've got this. The question is, are we at a consensus that we should have a covenant running with the land, which says it must be used for public education, for free public education? Are we at a consensus on that?
And, and I would ask for... And, and I would ask for, that's one of the questions I would like clarity from the board on. What I heard in the discussion was the preference of some members would be a covenant that the prop site will be used in perpetuity for public education, or at least for as long as possible. And that flexibility may be helpful if, if there's a desire to get the, get the, you know, transaction done for next week. But if, if members feel very strongly that it should be in perpetuity, then let me know that, and that's the negotiating position I relayed. We see what, how they respond.
Okay, I believe, Mr. Levy, you've already said that that was in your notes, correct?
Yes, that, that it should be, though, though you don't have to use the term "in perpetuity", it would just be a covenant running with the land, that it must be used for free public education, and they're free to litigate it 100 years from now, whatever they want to do with, with, with that. But just that simple covenant running with the land.
And I believe, Mr. Hensley, you were in agreement with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dennison, are you in agreement? Oh, unmuted.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it. Yes, I do.
Ms. Thompson, how do you feel about this? All right, and Ms. Caldwell? And I don't know if we have Mr. Holmes back with us or not. I know Mr. Eklund is working with him to get him back online, but I think that's by consensus because I certainly think that...
He's, he's with us, Madam Chair.
Good. Mr. Holmes, are you able to hear the discussion?
I picked up bits and pieces of it, yes.
All right, we're, we're looking toward a consensus that, a covenant that would specify that the property being sold to Moore Montessori would always be used for free public education.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And Madam Chair, I can just interject one more time. I just want to make sure, I hope I didn't mislead anyone here, I want to make sure I'm clear. I'm not, I can't tell you that Moore Montessori would agree to this. As, as I mentioned in our discussions, the school did express concerns about that it's very difficult to project long-term needs. You know, as, as you all know from your experience, you know, what's a great site for a school now may not be a great site for a school years from now.
You, you, council, council, you tell them how unreasonable Mr. Levy was, and how unreasonable he's going to be, and that Mr. Levy demands that you just walk off that damn table if they don't agree. Let's see what they do.
I, I, I'm providing context of my conversation, since you all haven't had the, you know, the back and forth of them, that has been an issue that's been raised. Again, I'm happy to take whatever position the board wants.
And I believe there was a second thing that Mr. Hensley wanted, which was that the, that the, that profits be used solely for capital improvements. I think I've sort of shortened that, but isn't that what you wanted, Mr. Hensley? Am I incorrect?
Yes, and just one, a couple other things. Actually, I forgot the first one, but used in perpetuity for free public education, rents go to capital improvements. And from a negotiating standpoint, what's the downside? Oh, I remember what I was going to say. Mr. Rainey, your point paper points out that they're agreeing to these covenants in exchange for us selling it via private sale below what we believe the fair market value is. So they can take it or leave it, and if they decide not to accept the free public education covenant, then we just walk away from the table, and I'm quite sure that we'll get $1 million or more than the $1.6 million that we're currently being offered. So the downside to us is we'll have more money to fix our schools that are in disrepair.
Again, I'm certainly not, not taking issue with any of these, I just, just seeking feedback and clarification, appreciate it.
But, but that, what I wanted to get was this one consensus, are we at consensus on the capital improvements thing? Are we in a consensus on that?
I believe that we are, yes. There were thumbs up.
It's written in there.
And, and Mr. Rainey, I'd still like to know what happens to it if the charter school ceases to exist and if it's possible for us to, you know, contract it to return to the Moore County Schools.
Absolutely, and I agree, and I think that's, that's worth looking into, and I'd certainly be happy to, if it's all right with the board, I, you know, it's hard to know where that leads because I don't know the answer to the question, or if I'll get a clear answer to the question. But I certainly can work with staff to do our best to accommodate that concern and provide the strongest mechanism that we can, that we can to ensure that if the, if the site, if the school were to lose its charter, that this, the property wouldn't go to the state of North Carolina, that it would come back to the school board in some fashion. I'll certainly work towards that end. That's, if, if again, there's a consensus, which I'm seeing some nods, and if, if we can do the thumbs perhaps, let me know, it seems to be...
So, it's my understanding, and when I crafted these proposed restrictive covenants over a month ago, it's my understanding that if Moore Montessori were to fail and the restrictive covenant used in perpetuity for free public education was on the deed, then it would have to be sold to an organization that met that requirement. So Moore County Schools would be able to buy it back. But who would Moore County Schools be competing against? Well, if the law stayed the same, it would be Moore County Schools competing against another eligible charter school, if any. That's my understanding of how that would unfold.
I believe that's correct.
And, and I, I might add that even in bankruptcy, the covenant running with the land be extremely, seems to me to be extremely hard to strip that, even in a bankruptcy. But, but if they did it contractually, the bankruptcy court could take it and tear it up. So the covenant is important, I think.
Well, I think we'd probably give Mr. Rainey good direction here, and that we're in agreement with the direction we want this to go. So we will hear from him, I'm sure, in the course of the week, as he negotiates with Moore Montessori, and then we'll be able to continue discussion next week.
Dude, this has been very helpful, appreciate the feedback.
Any other comments on this one? Otherwise, then we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Southern Pines Primary School appraisal.
Madam Chair, the, as per the board's direction last month, Mr. Barath is back to report on, on the work he's been able to do, which, which took some effort over the holidays to assess the options for appraisers who can fulfill the board's interest as articulated in the presentation that Mr. Barath has. Along the way, late in the game, has, has been made very public over the last few days, we received a notification from the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust of their further interest in the site. And so just for the sake of ease on the agenda, we went ahead and folded that information piece into the executive summary. Instead of separating it out on the agenda, we just put them all in one place. The, the staff has no position on the most recent statement from the Land and Housing Trust. We're just providing that as a note of information and await the board's direction. What we do bring to you is a recommendation regarding the staff's preference of two potential appraisers that we think are both very impressive, and one that stands out is John articulating. You ready, John?
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, so just to remind the board, last month, again, you asked staff to take some action regarding the property, and they're outlined here. The first one being to take the measures to clear the roadway dedications that have been formally opened by the town of Southern Pines prior, to take measures to carve out the portion of the site where the cemetery encroached onto the property, and also to commission separate appraisals of the portion of the site that's subject to the discussed 1924 deed condition, the balance of the contiguous site, and the portion of property across West Indiana Avenue. To do this, we have reached out to other school districts who might have undergone any appraisals of such properties in their areas. We went through Moore County looking for any appraisal companies that have done commercial and/or also school property assessments as part of their qualifications. We did find in Moore County one such company, Village Appraisers, and they have performed commercial appraisals as well as those on school projects and requested the qualifications and resumes from them. We also reached out to Craig D. Smith, an MIA based in Raleigh. He is on the preapproval appraiser list for Wake County Public Schools and has performed property appraisals for that district as well as for property for Johnson County Schools. The properties that he had appraised for Wake County and Johnson County Schools were all for undeveloped properties. They did not have schools on them, they were for acquisition purposes by the school boards. So Village Appraisers, as I mentioned, has performed two school-built property appraisals, one in Anson County and the other in Richmond County. In review of their qualifications, it is our recommendation to the superintendent that Village Appraisers be selected to perform the appraisals of the old Southern Pines Primary School as outlined and directed by the board. That the board authorized staff and the superintendent to negotiate the agreement for the appraisal services, and the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement as permitted by the school board, Policy 2500. And just as further information, we will have the elements required for the measures to clear the roadway dedications and the cemetery encroachment next week from the surveyors. And so with that information, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, along with Neil Rainey.
Mr. Barath, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there was an email sent from Mr. Wilkinson, the last email, and I think I read something in there that he said something about the previous appraiser wasn't qualified. Do you know anything about that? Can you?
I can do. Go ahead. Mr. Barath, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Wilkinson took issues with the appraisal that the board had commissioned before the trust had made any inquiries into the site, and we've had some discussions with him about that. But, you know, we are, where we are is the board has directed staff to commission these new appraisals, so I think we're pretty much moving beyond that, any disputes over the prior appraisals at this point.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just trying to understand, you know?
Yeah, they, they raised some objections to the, to the original appraisal.
Was the Village appraisal the Moore, the Moore County people? I might miss that.
Yes, they are based out of Pinehurst.
And you guys have, you guys have confidence in them, right?
Based off their statement qualifications and similar properties assessed, yes.
Sounds, sounds fair to me. We already, we already moved, already moved what we want to do at, at the last meeting. Don't want to relitigate what we took hours to, to deal with at the last meeting, and let's see what the appraisals are.
Right, the motion would, next week would be simply to select Village Appraisers to perform the...
I have, if, if it's okay, Levy, I have something to say. I just, I just don't understand why we would spend $15,000 or more on an appraisal when we're complaining about every single dollar that we spend right now. My personal opinion in appraise, just because I'm a real estate agent, an appraisal isn't going to change from a year ago that much, maybe a, maybe a couple grand, maybe $50,000, but it's not going to change, it's not going to be huge, a huge change. The land trust still wants it, and to me, I think we still should do the upset bid process on this. I think we're going to get more money with that. So that's where I stand on this.
Well, I have to agree a little bit there. $15,000 would be the two hot water heaters at Vast Lakeview School.
Well, we've wasted money elsewhere.
Well, let me, let me ask, let me ask a question. The previous appraiser, he can't simply update his appraisal for, for the, for the two different parcels? Am I incorrect here?
There would be a cost to do that because he would have to break them out and then assess them independently and separately based off of his prior research into the property, which he has conducted.
And, and that would, the cost of that would be what?
That cost would be less than bringing in a new appraiser to perform an appraisal of the property. The understanding of staff and legal counsel was a desire to bring in a different appraiser than the one who the board previously commissioned to do it and separate from the one the Southern Pines Land and Housing Trust reached out to do theirs.
Well, perhaps, perhaps you're, perhaps you're correct. Perhaps we need to have a, a, a fresh look at this, but here's my problem. You see, if we simply take this property and do an upset bid, the land trust has pulled their, has, 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 has pulled a fast one on us. Because the land trust is basically saying, we've got this, this covenant, and we're going to sue anybody who, who violates this covenant. So if you, so you're suppressing the, the value of the land because you're not selling it without the covenant. So that's their, that's, they're playing us, and they're doing a fairly good job. Mr. Wilkinson, pretty, pretty smart attorney, but we've got to outsmart them, and we can't play their game. We've got to find out what this, this thing is worth, and it just seems to me that, by the way, I drove down Carlisle Street between the old school and the new school, and I want you to think about it this way. I'm going to bet that the first house I came to on Carlisle Street that was beyond, that was beyond the new school on a quarter acre lot would cost me $200,000. And I'm going to sell 10, 15 acres worth of land for the same $15,000? Doesn't make sense, especially for, 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 for the taxpayers. So I don't know why it should cost so much money for an appraiser. If it does, fine, but we can't be out of, we, 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 we can't be, basically intentionally suppress the value of the land just because of a threat of a lawsuit.
I have a, just a question to that, Robert. What about, say it praises for, let's just say it praises for $75,000 more, so we know it's worth that much more? It's still going to keep us in the same, same thing that we're in. The land trust is still going to do what they need to do to get their property, so what's the new appraisal going to really do for us as far as selling it? Someone else is going to try to come in and that land, the land trust is going to try to, you know, swipe them right back out because they have that covenants of the old deed.
No, 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 no.
That's kind of where my statement, I just don't know where it would be.
No, here's the problem. The covenant is only as to four acres. We could take that four acres, we're going to take that, the reason for the appraisal is we're going to take that four acres out of there, and we're going to try to sell the land either without the four, either without the four acres, or if you have to do a lot split, whatever you got to do to sell the other property. That takes, that, that takes the land trust and its, its lawyers out of the equation. So my guess is that if it's 10 acres, I'm forgetting what the exact acreage is, I apologize, Ms. Caldwell. If it's 10 acres, six acres would probably be worth about the same amount of money as the 10 acres, and we've eliminated the, the, the problem. The land trust is just, land trust is trying to bamboozle you by making you think that this, this covenant is on the entire piece of property. And, 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 and that's their bamboozle, okay? What is, what, they're, they're trying to, in terms of the musical Chicago, they're going, trying to razzle-dazzle you. Don't let them, don't, don't, don't let the smart lawyers razzle-dazzle you.
Right, but don't, I want everyone to also remember that if we do that, that's still more money that we're going to have to put into this because we're going to need a new survey, we're going to need to run it through the courts to try to get that done. I mean, we're going to need a, I don't know, even know if we have one, but a real estate, yeah, we do, a real estate lawyer to come up with documents to do all that. So, I mean, there is going to be a lot of money attached to doing that, and I think, you know, Bob, I think that's a great idea, but we also have to remember that that is something that we're going to have to pay for as well.
Excuse me, Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
So you just, you want to go ahead and sell the school for $200,000, is that correct? Just to get the money?
No, I want to do an upset bid process. It doesn't mean that we have to accept it at the end, but I want to see who's out there that would, just like what we're doing with Aberdeen.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that you have to accept it at the end, it just, you go through the upset bid process to see who's going to bid on it.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So long as, so long as, what's going to happen is their lawyers are going to send to every person who does this upset bid, a letter, and that letter is going to say, we're going to sue you, but more than that, they're going to send it to the title company. And when they send that letter to the title... And when they send that letter to the title company, nobody is going to insure the title. So the only persons, so their, their game, that they're trying to play, and they're playing a good one, I don't doubt that, that, that they're, they're trying to play the game that we're the only game in town, and, and, and they're doing, they're doing a good job of it. That's the razzle dazzle. That's the reason why, and I'm going to say this, Ms. Caldwell, sometimes you have to tell people, we're not going to get bamboozled. Sometimes you have to tell them, we're not going to play your game. And if we hang tough, and I hate to say it, but I would have hung much tougher on that $200,000. Sometimes if you get a reputation of hanging tough on such, such stuff, then in the future, they won't try to bamboozle you again.
Ms. Thompson, that's her hand up.
Madam Chair, I agree with Mr. Levy's point of checking to see about our appraiser that did our initial appraisal. If, if all of us don't feel confident to go with him, then I suggest that we go with the Village Appraisers' response.
And the point of the appraisal being to entertain the amount of the four acre value.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, it's both. It's both the four acre value on the one hand and the whatever is left on the other.
I think we might have Mr. Hensley on phone. I'm not sure about that.
Yes, I, yes, Madam Chair, I dialed in. I'm sorry, my computer's not cooperating, but I have a couple comments on this, if I could, please. Do I have the floor?
Yes, yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, Ms. Barath, great job. You got a lot of progress done over the holidays, so I commend you on that. I want to talk about the unsolicited proposal from the Southern Pines Land Trust, and I think that some of the views that I have that I'm going to express may answer some of Mrs. Caldwell's questions and concerns. So just to remind everyone on the history, at the 14 December meeting, Mr. Dennison wisely put forth a successful motion which unlocks the value of the property by separating the 16 acre property into two tracts. One four acre tract that's perhaps tainted by the deed restriction, which may or may not be enforceable, that's what Mr. Levy was talking about, and then a 12 acre unencumbered tract that could be sold to anyone without threat of a lawsuit. And what's interesting is if you read Southern Pines Law, Land Trust's own documentation, they state that their threat of a lawsuit to enforce the questionable deed restrictions, they use that as an argument for why the property should be sold at such a low cost. So to Mr. Levy's point, even the Southern Pines Land Trust is acknowledging that they're holding the value of that property hostage with the threat of a lawsuit against that four acres, which may or may not be enforceable, but it's a real threat, and Southern Pines Land Trust admits it even as recently as their last communication. So now that we voted last meeting, now that we approved Mr. Dennison's motion to unlock the value of the land and maximize our revenue, Southern Pines Land Trust is desperately trying to buy the property before that happens and why the price is artificially low. So why does Mr. Hensley believe that the price is artificially low, and what can we expect the land value to be? Like Mr. Levy, I too have gone out there several times and driven around. Half the mile up the road on the exact same street, property is selling for $275,000 to $300,000 an acre, plus approximately $200,000 an acre in land development costs. So what's that mean? Land ready to build half a mile up Carlisle Street is valued at half a million dollars an acre. The Board of Education Central Office knows this because a few years ago, we spent $800,000 for marginal land with an 80-foot drop and spent approximately $200,000, $250,000 an acre developing that land. So we ourselves have approximately $250,000, maybe $300,000 an acre in land half a mile away on the same street. So if you look at Morganton Park, again, the development half a mile up the road, it is developing into a health sciences and biosciences park. What's that mean to the, the value of the property that's currently Southern Pines Primary? That means that those 12 unencumbered acres would be best used building condos or apartments for the people who are going to be working in those hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm sorry, hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial medical and biosciences filled. So again, to Mr. Levy's point, why would we negotiate with a gun to our head? Let's get rid of the gun. Let's continue with Mr. Dennison's motion, which was approved in the last meeting. Let's subdivide the land into 12 unencumbered acres and a separate parcel of four acres, which may or may not be encumbered, and let's sell it that way. Only that way will we truly know the value of the land, and I suspect it's much closer to what land is selling in Morganton Park than we, than what most people believe. So that's all my comments.
Ms. Carter, your, your mic...
Madam Chair, we can't, you're muted.
Yes.
I think we might have lost Mr. Holmes again, or maybe he is on a phone call as well. I'm not sure about that. Are there any other questions or comments from folks who haven't spoken yet, or maybe everyone has at this point?
I was just going to say that David, you're on point with that. I mean, our, our market is skyrocketing right now. For some reason, COVID has been a blessing to the, to the real estate world, but, you know, I just, you know, I just think that we need, just need to be careful on how much money we're going to spend on this.
So next week, our, our only matter for actual consideration is whether or not we're hiring Village Appraisers to, to continue on with the appraisal, or if we would want to go back to the firm, and Mr. Barath, I'm sure knows the name of the firm, which did the earlier appraisal. And I don't know, it's worth checking with them to see what the cost might be for them to do a secondary one at this point, since they would already have so much of the information Mr. Barath, you want to weigh in on that?
I can certainly go to, back to Shaw Boykin and ask them for Propulsive Services. This is a qualification, qualification-based selection process for who the board accepts as the best qualified appraiser to use. And so upon approval by the board to identify which appraiser that is, I can then go and solicit from them their cost to perform such services.
Right. Other comments or questions at this point about the procedure? All right, then I think that we can move on to our next item and, and move forward that update this week so that we can take some kind of action. We move on now to the endorsement to gather public comment, and let me just go ahead and explain briefly to our newer board members in that we're not voting on the calendar right now. We're going to put it out there on the airwaves and allow parents to weigh in on the calendar to provide feedback for what has been proposed. And someone who's never really examined a school calendar will find it most restrictive. There are so many state guidelines that frame the way a calendar can be put together. It is, it is a very difficult process, and I guess Dr. Grimacy and Dr. Metcalf can do a much better job explaining why this particular calendar has been put together, but we will also have a chance to discuss the calendar in itself. So next week, we'll just be voting to put this before people to see, to let our parents weigh in. So Dr. Grimacy or...
Madam Chair, I'll just defer to Dr. Metcalf for item 2D, endorsement to gather public comment for the 2021, 2021, 2022 school year. Dr. Metcalf?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Chair Carter, member of the board. I'm here on behalf of the Calendar Committee. In October, we set up a committee to propose calendar options for the 21, 22 school year. This committee is made up of parents and teachers, support staff, district level staff. We've met multiple times. We review the state and district policies, and as you know, Chair Carter, we do not have a lot of flexibility in calendar law. We're limited, for example, in opening and closing dates. However, we have developed an initial draft calendar. This is just a draft calendar. Current Moore County Schools Regulation 5031R requires that the Calendar Committee develops the tentative calendar in which all school system employees and the public may provide feedback. So based on these requirements, the Calendar Committee requests the School Board's endorsement to place the draft 21, 22 calendar on the Moore County Schools website for public comment and feedback. Draft calendar will be posted from January 13th through January 27th. We'll gather that feedback anonymously, we'll compile it, and we'll bring it to the School Board as well as a calendar, February 1st, 21 work session, along with the Calendar Committee's recommendation for calendar adoption. Happy to answer any questions you may have. If you'd like me to go through the draft calendar, I'd be happy to do that as well.
So as if you've never really studied the way a school calendar gets put together, it is most interesting. And I know when I printed my copy of it out, it was, it's much harder to see the gray days, but the, the dates that are shadowed in gray are those in which students are actually attending. I know that we are restricted on our first day of school and our last day of school by the General Assembly, and of course, there was some leeway this year because of the crisis, the pandemic, such that we were able to start a little bit earlier, and perhaps that will happen next year again. I did ask Dr. Metcalf already if he saw there being any flexibility coming out of Raleigh, and of course, he didn't know, and not being a mind reader, but he did assure me that if, if some change was made possible, that, that we would immediately revisit the calendar. One of our goals has been to try and hold senior exam, or high school exams before Christmas, and that is very difficult to do if we're not allowed to start until the week of August 25th.
Yes, high, high school exam, and also try to align ourselves with the community college schedule as well. Unfortunately, to do that under the certain, under the current calendar requirements, we would have to have an unbalanced first semester and second semester, and that's very hard for the high schools.
Are there calls for Dr. Metcalf?
I have one. I was just curious of why, I know this year they did it, because it's today, but they have a teacher workday today, and they didn't do that for January on the 3rd, but they, I believe the RW is a workday, but they did that after Martin Luther King Day. I wasn't sure if that would be something you can consider to change, because I know that's really important for teachers to have that day to kind of come back and get everything prepared on that day.
That is a great feedback, and of course, Calendar Committee will review all feedback that we receive. The reason for that, that January date, that 18th workday is because the 14th is the last day of the semester.
Got it.
And so we always want to have a day for high schools as we transition to the second semester, and so we did take that from the 3rd and put that on to the 18th, but as I say, Calendar Committee can certainly review all of the feedback that we receive and see if there's other options available to us.
Thank you.
Dr. Metcalf, two, two questions. Number one, is this a, are there any major departures that are made from, we'll not say this year's calendar, because this year's calendar is certainly crazy, but from a normal calendar, is, is this calendar depart from any of that? And number two, are any of the teacher workdays on this calendar immediately following a holiday so as to encourage people to have a longer holiday, which is what we don't want to do?
Good question. I'll answer the first question first. I think one of the changes for this, this draft that required a lot of debate around the Calendar Committee was where the placement of spring break was. So for the last number of years, three or four years, we've tried to be consistent about where spring break is, and it's been the first full week of April. We've done that for several reasons. One of the main reasons was so that the public could, could plan for it. They would know that spring break was the first full week of April. Sometimes that was connected to Passover and Easter weekend. Sometimes it's not. For example, this year, it would be connected to Passover and Easter. This calendar, it would not be if we did it the, the first week of April. Calendar Committee reviewed that, and they really felt that stretch of period of time between January all the way to April was a long, was a long time for students to be in classes. And so in this draft, they've placed, which is different than previous years, they've placed the spring break as the last week in March. It'll be interesting to see what kind of feedback that we get. That'll be one that I really will highlight when I take this around to our advisory groups. I'll take this to our teacher advisory group and our student advisory groups and our parent advisory groups this month, and that, that conversation, I think, will come up and will be one that we really highlight. Your second question's about the trying to connect to holidays. We try not to do that. I'd have to look more precisely to see whether we did in any particular case. I don't know of hand, have to good look, but we do talk about the fact that workdays are workdays, and we don't want to make, send a message to our staff that that is a day to take off.
We have one anywhere. The, the Martin Luther King Day and the workday are connected, but I believe that might be the only one. All right, are there further questions? Again, what we'll be voting on is just to put this out for public purview so that we might get feedback. All right, then we will put that aside. Thank you, Dr. Metcalf.
Madam Chair, the staff awaits the board's direction for your desires for board action versus consent next week.
Okay, let's, let's just go down and decide which ones are action or consent, and then we will come back and discuss meeting location. All right, item A, which is endorsement to gather public comment on the, on existing school facilities, that would normally just be a consent item, because you're, you're just putting it out for a public forum. Is there...
I have a question.
Yes.
How are you going to do a, a public comment on a virtual basis?
It's, okay, well, you're talking about when, when people want to speak on something.
Yeah, isn't that what this is?
No, this is, this will give them an extended, I believe it's two weeks, that a portal will be open for people to look at the...
That is correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, this is not the public comment area, but Ms. Murphy stands by to address that in a moment. So can we put this one on consent agenda?
I, I would, I would rather not because I want to see those four lists. It may be that it's just, just something that we'll just vote on real quickly, but I, I really can't agree to the consent agenda at this point.
All right, then we will put that one on action. That's, that is, number 2A is on action.
Madam Chair, if I could, just to make sure I understand, I thought we were going to send you the spreadsheet, Mr. Levy?
You, you, you are, you are. But, but in other words, we may want to discuss what's on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
And that's, that's eventually what our hope would be. Right now, we're just looking to put this out to the public, so, okay.
All right, number two is the offer to purchase Southern Pines Elementary School. Obviously, that's going to be an action item. The item three, C, is the Southern Pines Primary appraisal, that's going to be an action item. The endorsement to gather public comment for the calendar, that's really normally just a consent, is opening the portal.
I would say consent.
I, I would agree, consent.
Consent on item D. All right, so A, B, and C will be action items, item D is a consent item. All right, so now, as, as promised, let's go back and talk about...
Madam Chair, madam chair, just to clarify, you also have discussed the addition of, of an information item where there would be a, a, a statement authorized by legal counsel that we could share to provide information to enhance public awareness of LP versus Moore County Schools.
Right, well, that...
Right. Well, that, that would not fall under consent origin or action.
Just to make sure that all board members are clear, the staff and legal counsel note that we will include that as an information item.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And then not to forget, we were also going to talk about this A, B, this, the, the reason for moving to the A schedule.
That's why-
I believe that Dr. Grimace was going to explain some things.
That's later to, that'll be in section three tonight, Mr. Levy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Grimace.
All right. So we're clear on which ones are action and consent. All right. So now to discuss where, where we are meeting or how we are meeting. It would be my recommendation to continue our meeting next week on a virtual basis. I know I've heard from several of you about whether or not this is the way to go. I'd like to call upon Ms. Catherine Murphy to walk us through the process of public address to the board when a meeting is virtual. We held quite a few virtual meetings in the course of the, of last spring and summer, and they worked very efficiently. It looks like Ms. Murphy's calling in from the beach there.
Not quite.
Can you share with us how public address is handled when, when it's a virtual meeting?
Members of the public can provide comment either by phone or in writing. They can sign up to receive a phone call from me during the meeting where they could give their public comments in person, or they can send them in writing and I can read them during the public comment section of the meeting.
All right. So at prior meetings, she was able to work our, work us through, I believe it was about 30 emails that came in that Ms. Murphy read through for us in the course of meetings. This is how the commissioners have run their meetings as well while they have been holding virtual meetings.
And yeah, and the signup time is the same as it would be if it were in person. So the signup window would open at about 5:45 PM and then close five minutes before the start of the open portion of the meeting. And there's a variety of different ways where people can sign up, either via send me an email, or they can call me. And those that have requested by phone will be time stamped at the time I receive the call. And then they would be called back in that order. And then following the phone comments, I would read in order of submission, the written comments submitted during that same time period. And all of those instructions are laid out in great detail that go along with the agenda for next week's meeting. Anyone needing special accommodation can also contact me directly and we can make arrangements for them to provide comment.
It's almost like they have a more, more of an opportunity doing it this way, to be honest with you, because we, we didn't allow people to write in comments and read them when we were publicly.
And then if they, you know, feel uncomfortable coming to a public meeting because of the pandemic, or they feel like they might be compromised, they might have a health issue, whatever, they can, they can still provide their comments verbally by phone or in writing. So it allows a little bit more of an opportunity for public comment than normal.
Couldn't we do that?
Probably have.
Do that even if we were back face to face?
I'm sorry?
Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, Ms. Holmes. I think what, what he was asking, we might have lost him again. What he was asking was, is there, can people not send in written comments if we are meeting in person?
Well, members of the public can send comments to the entire board at any time. Doesn't have to be limited during public comment time. But normally during in-person meetings, individuals would come and speak to the board in person. We don't normally have written comments read aloud at the meetings. For example, if someone were to send me an email with written comments, I wouldn't go before the board normally and recite those comments. But if they're submitted in writing, they will be passed out to all the members of the board during the meeting. But of course, members of the public can provide their comments at any time. But if they want them provided for the public record, typically they would attend a meeting and provide those verbally at the meeting.
Madam Chair, I have one question. How long are we going to keep on with this virtual when the students and teachers are back in school?
You know, that is yet to be determined. And that is what we are talking about now. Mr. Holmes, I do believe you were the one that recommended we keep our meeting virtual for another two weeks.
No, I, I was talking about giving them the option.
No, no, I think you suggested we delay the reopening of school for two weeks in our conversations, but that's neither here nor there. This is our chance to talk. I think Mr. Levy is ready to speak up.
Yes, thank, thank you. What we have to look at is this. We're telling students that it's safe and it's okay to come back to school in, in, in a, in a full five-day format. I agree with that, by the way. I think it is, and I think we should, and I think we also must, as I, I did a, a motion last time, to make sure that parents also have the option and Dr. Grimace and, and the administration also had the, the, the ability to allow people to go virtual if they decided to. But if what we're doing here is we're looking at, we're, we're a public body and we're saying, it's not safe or convenient or anything for us to meet face to face, but the kids can. I think that sends the wrong message. In fact, I think it sends a terrible message. We socially distance at our meetings at about, I think, five, six feet, at least six feet. We could socially distance in, in, in that room that we were at before for 12 feet. We're all wearing masks. There seems to be no reason under the sun that we cannot meet together. And more than that, to answer Mr. Holmes's inquiry, there's no reason why, if a person is concerned about coming to the board, that they can't, number one, phone in their comments, because I believe they've always been able to do that, or number two, write them in if we're meeting together. But we have to be, we represent people and we represent voters. And we have to be crystal clear to the voters that it's time for their children to come back to school. And it's a balancing act. It is indeed a balancing act. There are, there, there, there are some problems, but overall, it's better for kids to be in school five days a week. It's better for their education and it's better for their interaction. And if you take a look at our virtual meeting here right now, we have members who are falling off the, the grid. We have, sometimes we can't hear people, the like, and we can't judge their reactions. With this, this is a perfect situation where we see that face to face is much better than virtual. So I believe that, and I'm going to make the motion, that we have our next meeting and all meetings face to face rather than virtual. But that any board member who wants to should be able to come in virtually if that's their desire. The same thing that we give to our students. And that's, that's my motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before, before we have discussion over a motion, just to remind the board, the, the agenda was already approved. I think procedurally, the proper thing to do would be to have a motion to amend the agenda again to add, to add this as a, as a, as an action item. Normally, we don't take action on items like this at a work session. It's for discussion, as has happened before. There's no, as I've mentioned earlier, there's no strict legal prohibition. It's a little bit in the gray area because the meeting was not noticed as an action item. But since, given the, the context, probably relatively low risk, but still procedurally, I think I would recommend that if there's a desire to do, take action at this time, there'd first be a motion to amend the agenda, which would require a second and a two-thirds vote, since the amendment's already been approved, and subsequently a motion to act on the motion.
Well, I'll go, I'll go you one better, since it'll only be a majority. I'll withdraw that motion and I'll make a motion to overrule the decision of the chair to have a, to have our meetings virtual.
And that, that motion has already been ruled upon. So-
Has it?
No, it is not specifically tabled till this portion of the meeting.
I, I thought the, there was an objection earlier and a point of order, an appeal to the, to the, to the board of the chair's decision to notice the meeting.
If I could, if I could remind you, what happened was, the chair said when I said such, that, that, that I was out of order. And then the chair said, couldn't we put this till the end of the meeting? I said, fine, you know. But, but we haven't, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't voted on that.
But my, my recollection was that there was an appeal of the chair's decision and, and that the, a majority of the board, only three vote, there were only three votes to overturn the chair's decision. That's not to say, Mr. Levy, that you couldn't make a motion at this time to, you know, to change the notice for the subsequent meeting, you know. But again, I think we, there were, procedurally, I would suggest that first it'd be a motion to amend the agenda before action on the motion.
If I want to, I want to be crystal clear to, to, to you, Mr. Rainey. The, the, the ruling of the chair was on the agenda. And the vote on the ruling of the chair was on whether to, whether the, whether the chair should have added certain items to the agenda. And I purposely did not bring this item up because I felt that this item was already on the agenda.
You're correct.
Because we're deciding, we're deciding the agenda for next, next meeting. And that's all I want to do is decide the agenda for next meeting. So I think I'm in order.
And that is correct. So-
You're correct. I apologize. I got lost in the tangle of, of procedure earlier, but I, I think that is correct without checking my notes. So that would mean that this time, Mr. Levy hasn't, I guess, has made a motion to overrule the chair's decision to notice this, the subsequent meetings until further notice as virtual. And I didn't hear if there was a second.
Second.
A point, point of order, real quick, point of order.
Mr. Hansler.
Mr. Rainey, your argument was that we had to amend the agenda because this is not on the agenda. Well, it's right there on the agenda, item E, school board meeting agenda for, for January 11th. And right there at the top of the document is remote electronic format. So I would contend that this is on the agenda. So, which is more proper, to have a motion that this be virtual or to override the chair?
And Mr. Hansler, I withdrew my comment. It was based on a misrecollection of the tangle of procedure from earlier in the meeting. I apologize.
So then I'll withdraw my motion. So therefore, I'll withdraw my motion to overrule the chair. I think the more proper motion is, since it's on the agenda, to have the, the meetings in person rather than virtual, the, the, the next meeting, which I believe is on the agenda. I won't say future meetings because I don't think future meetings are on the agenda. How's that?
All right. So the motion is, and is that we hold the meeting on January 11th in an in-person format. And I do believe Mr. Holmes was ready to second that motion as it was previously made. All right. So is there discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Pam, and I, I just have a couple of comments. One is that I actually received comments from my last meeting of folks that had shown up to speak. And sitting, looking across the audience, and there were several people that did not have their mask on throughout the meeting. And I know a couple of different times, we did ask the public to please adhere to our policy of keeping their mask on at all times. I think that's one of the, of the key elements that have been so successful in keeping our students and staff safe in schools that, to follow the guidelines. And, and I don't think that we should try to police people, take them from the stand outside in the bill. I just, I just don't think we need to go that far. If we are going back to onsite meetings, we either need to make sure people absolutely understand they have to wear their mask at all times, or limit the number of people that we allow in the audience. And, and I don't have a problem. I, I have to be careful with being exposed with, with my work. And I know that there are staff that's in the audience and they are fearful of being around people who don't have their mask on. So, so that, that's where my concerns are.
Ms. Thompson, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I just have a couple of things. So to go back to Ms. Thompson, as far as the people not obeying the request, we have, I don't know how many SROs there at the last meeting. And I don't understand, if we have these rules, we have law enforcement there, why not just dismiss them? Okay. Also, a second thing that the superintendent wrote in his email, this was back in December of 18th, right before the break, "Our infections actually peaked last week and started to decline this week. No principal supervisor have expressed any concerns about our capacity to sustain operations even after the holidays." So with that being said, how, you see what I mean? I mean, it doesn't make sense. How can you say one thing, but we can't meet face to face?
I think Dr. Grimace's reference was to-
It is, I mean, it's the same. It's, it's really the same. It's the same principle. Okay. He doesn't have, nobody has any concerns about, about being in school, right? So really and truly, we have no real, okay. So if we, how, we distance ourselves so much over there, and we can do more. There has been so many in-person meetings even before we got elected. Even if there was nobody else in the room, you still had everybody here. And if we do that, then it's going to eliminate all this talking over each other, you know, this, that, and the other. And we need to, we need to have these in person. If the public's not there, then we still need to be there.
Let's back up and say that we, we are not without concern for our children in the classrooms or our-
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
Are in there with them. It's a great concern to us as we return to that five days a week with keeping all of them safe. I think Dr. Grimace's comments pertaining to our principals running their own classrooms, not to the adults that have gathered in our gymnasium who perceive not wearing-
What about the comment of the infections declining?
Within our, within our schools, but we're not controlling our schools at a board meeting. We're not, we can't control that.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you see the correlation here?
No.
Well, you know, we'll just have to talk about it later on because, I mean, it's, you know how I feel. I mean, everybody, we need to be there. This is, this is, I don't understand why it's been done before and all of a sudden now on our third meeting, it's going virtual. I just don't, it, it baffles me, the reasoning behind it. All of a sudden, you know, boom, there it is. I mean, I understand that you have the right, you have the right to make that decision. But just because you have that right doesn't mean that it is right. I don't think that it is the proper thing to do. I think that you should, you know, we should all discuss this. Now, more than likely, we're going to be outnumbered anyway, so it really doesn't matter. I'm just blowing off steam for, you know, all this. We need to be there. There's no reason why we shouldn't. The public comment about us being there, but the kids going to school, the public is saying this. I think they deserve better.
All right, Mr. Dennison, and then Mr. Hansley.
Yes, I am not in favor of in-person meetings. We all know that there are going to be people there that are going to refuse to wear their mask. And we're not going through the hassle of arresting them or doing any of that other stuff. They're all adults there. They all know the policy. Unlike schools where our kids do wear the mask all the time, we haven't had any major problems there. It's safer in school than it is at the school board meetings. And I, I, I will not attend an in-person school board meeting.
You're kidding. You think that school board meetings are more unsafe than being in school?
Yes, they are. And because of the adults there that don't wear their masks. Yes, they are. And because of the adults there that don't wear their masks. And, uh, that's my stand. And I have, I'm def, I am definitely against, uh, having in-person meetings. No question in my mind at all. Philip, quiet please. Uh, for our, our senior staff that's there, we have virtually all our senior staff there, uh, and we cannot afford to lose any of those people if something happens. So that's it.
Mr. Hensley.
And mute. Yep, got it. That's a tough, uh, that's a tough act to follow. So, um, I'm going to cover some, um, I just have some random thoughts, some of which have been covered and some which haven't. Um, so my first thought is leadership and setting the example, and this has been mentioned many times before, the optics of when we're asking faculty and staff K through five to return with minimal social distancing to their classroom while at the same time, for some reason, we cannot have a meeting of 20 to 30 adults in a large gymnasium. That just doesn't seem right. Um, I've heard people say that, well, you know, we have other meetings, principal meetings and this and that. Well, I'd like to remind people that Board of Education meetings are not regular meetings. Board of Education meetings are special. They serve a higher purpose and therefore should be treated differently. And it's our job to set the example, not cower in fear. Um, not being able to hear masked speakers. Uh, for those who have read, for those who have read Governor Cooper's executive order, there are specific carve-outs. There's an extent, I'm sorry, there is a specific exclusion to his executive order for public speakers. And it specifically states that while public speaking, public speakers can remove their mask so they're better understood. People not following the rules. That's a great question. And my question is, why weren't they enforced? The minute Mr. Dennison pointed out in the last Board of Education meeting that there were people not wearing, properly wearing their masks, the chair should have had them removed from the meeting. I've publicly stated that after the meeting. Uh, that's covered in our bylaws. It's the duty of the chair to remove people from the meetings who are not following the rules. As an example, let's say, let's take COVID-19 out of this. Let's say someone was eating curry in the middle of a meeting and spilling it somewhere, and the fragrance was filling the room. Would we cancel our in-person meetings? Or would the chair have that person removed for not following the rules and eating during the session? Rules need to be enforced, not change our behavior because they're not being followed. Again, that's good order and discipline. That's good leadership. And that's, that is setting the example. As someone else pointed out, I agree. I think that any board member who wants to attend remotely should be able to attend remotely, as should staff members. We, we have, that's the way we conduct our schools. Why can't we conduct our board meetings in the same manner? Likewise, and I think this policy should be going forward, I think any member of the public who wants to, that wants to submit brief concise statements to be read, I think we should always do that, not just during COVID. Likewise, if somebody wants to attend a board meeting remotely in 2021, we should be able to support that, whether we have COVID or not. Why should handicapped people like Shiree have to make, have to leave her house, get in her scooter, drive 45 minutes to a board meeting, get out of her car, get to her scooter, get somehow get to the podium, whether we're ADA friendly or not, by sitting at home and expressing their views remotely? So, again, anyone, public, staff, Board of Education meeting should have the right, and it's not a technical challenge. We're doing it right now for them to attend remotely. More importantly, I'm concerned about the chilling effects that this has reducing discussion and debate and the motives for transferring to all virtual. On Sunday, and I publicly stated this on my Facebook page, on Sunday, the chair sent an email to all Board of Education meetings, and I want to make two quotes from her email. In that email, she stated that herself and Dr. Grimacy had an evaluation of the two in-person meetings conducted in December. Okay. Another quote or paraphrase is that while moving to a virtual platform does mean that we need to be more cognizant of speaking order and monopolizing time on each topic. I sincerely hope that we can self-police and stay attuned to all members eager to speak. I'm concerned that these quotes indicate, indicate that the purpose of moving from in-person meetings, which this board and the previous board did many, many times under COVID. Shoot, you had a completely full auditorium last year and had debate under COVID. There were no problems with that. My concern is that the purpose of this is that there's a desire of certain members to, for Board of Education members to say less, engage in less debate, and ask fewer questions. I think the effects will be less discussion, less debate, and less open exchange of ideas. As for the comment, comments, all members are eager to speak. I don't recall any members not having time in the previous Board of Education meetings, not having time to speak. In fact, if anyone had a chilling effect on members speaking, it was the chair constantly looking at her watch and stated many times, the meeting was running too long. So if anyone prevented board members from speaking out, it was the chair and her demeanor, not in-person meetings. Further, there's intangibles on in-person meetings, such as body language, expressions, and other things which cannot be gleaned or discerned during virtual meetings. And finally, in virtual meetings, how do we know that groups of boards, that groups of the Board of Education are not chatting behind the scenes to coordinate responses, votes, motions, et cetera? In fact, I believe that a careful review of previous virtual Board of Education meetings will indicate that such side discussions happened because it was clear that board members were being corrected behind the scenes on proper way to do motions and whatnot. So for the reasons I stated, I am opposed for our regular Board of Education meetings being held 100% virtual. That is all. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, sir. Mr. Holmes.
I think we all realize that you have the power to do, um, virtual meetings if you see fit. But I encourage you to, you know, look at other options, just like it has been stated all along. If, if Mr. Dennison or Ms. Thompson choose not to come, well, we can do a remote. That's, that's not a problem. I think it's, it's very, very important that we do meet. And I, I wish that, I mean, I can't explain it anymore than, you know, you have the superintendent saying, yeah, okay, it's okay. Everything's good, regardless of the context he used it in. It's the same principle. We're still battling COVID. We've had, we've had numerous meetings, just like I mentioned before, even before we were elected, we've had these meetings. We've had them in big auditoriums. The problem is, is the last meeting, there were, um, what, two or three maybe people that, you know, deliberately held their mask like right here to their nose. It, they had one, been worn. The second time, uh, Mr. Dennison said that he, we shouldn't be involved. That's the cops' job. That's the law enforcement's job. They're there to keep our rules. If we have to abide by the rules, then, and wear a mask, when I'm definitely opposed to it. If I have to do it and follow the rules, I think, um, everybody else should, um, as far as meetings go.
And Mr. Levy, you're showing green. Do you have another comment?
Uh, no, I think, um, I, I, I think all the points have been, have, have, have been taken. Um, and I just think that, uh, we need to pass this motion so that we can, so that we can tell the public that if they're going to school and it's good for the kids, we're going to have an open board meeting and it's good for us. But just like the public, and by the way, I hope we send this message to the public, yes, they can work with virtual because, go, go to virtual if they're concerned, because the administration's going to work with them. Okay? Just like that, we're, we, we can work with our own board members and say, if you want to be virtual, good. I respect that. And so we can do the meeting in person and with a couple of members virtual. That's okay too. All right. We just need to, we need to, as Mr. Hensley says, set an example. I'll submit.
Madam Chair, just, I just have one more comment to make. I, I'm doing this for protection of my family. I'm not worried about myself, but I will not put my family in a situation where they might be, you know, might be harmed by it.
And that's completely understandable. That, I just, I don't know why it hasn't been done prior. Does that make sense? I mean, like last month, didn't know. I don't, I don't know what the difference is between last month and this month, other than the holidays, really.
And just one, one comment in response to Mr. Dennison's. Ms. Ed, I agree with you. I mean, we all need to protect ourselves and our families and our loved ones. And that's why I believe that any board member, any, any senior staff member or anyone else can go virtual for any reason or no reason at all.
All right. Any other comments? All right, then we should be able to proceed to a vote. The motion was to override the chair's decision to hold the meeting of January 11th in a virtual format and to return to an in-person meeting. Uh, I will now.
I didn't really get to say anything. I was kind of waiting for everybody.
You want to speak?
And I, I had to shut my door because my dog kept yapping. Um, I just wanted to say, I understand where everyone's coming from. Um, the last meeting did, I, I will admit, did scare me because everyone, when we were having our five-minute breaks, they all gathered together and were really close and talking with each other. Um, and a lot of people, we all know, were there to just defy the rules to see what they can get away with. Um, when you ask an adult to please follow the rules and they don't, they're just defying it because they want to see what they can get away with. I get that. Whatever that is, it is, um, different strokes, I guess. But my point is, is that after that meeting, literally five days after, I got sick. It wasn't COVID because I got a test, but I got sick. And I wasn't with anybody else. This is the only meeting that I was at. Do I blame it on that? Who knows? It could have came from me going to the mailbox. I don't know. Um, with that said, I would like to, if we were to go into auditorium or, um, some other building, we would have to make sure that we are limiting the people going in there, which to me, um, is, is making it, might as well just do virtual because more people are having the option to speak and talk. Um, so I'm, either way, it really, to, to be honest, um, and we can do this month by month and see where it goes and see how well, um, each, each, you know, each month goes as far as it's COVID. I know we're probably going to get a rise within these two weeks coming up because Christmas, everyone was on holiday. Um, so to me, I think next week, for my benefit, I would like to be virtual. Maybe February, we can go back. Um, I just think there's going to be a rise in cases because everyone was gone. I mean, I had friends going to Mexico. So there's no telling, um, what people are bringing back. So that's kind of where I stand on the issue.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes. So I know there was a bunch of us during breaks, um, were, we were all, even central office staff were gathered up in groups. I mean, I don't, I don't see, I mean, it's going to happen either way. Or you can just, you know, say, everybody distance themselves. I don't, everybody was in a group. I mean, that's, it's not fair. It's not fair to say that, hey, these people were in groups. There's a bunch of people gathered around just for their safety. We need to do this. Uh, well, if they wanted to come, then, and take the risk, and, and they did come. Um, but, you know, just like, the police are there for a reason. If they're breaking the rules, make them leave. That's, it's simple. It's very, very simple.
All right. Any other discussion? Then we were.
Just a question. I'm sorry. I just wanted to confirm that the motion was seconded. I know that you had said, Mr. Holmes, I wasn't sure. I, I didn't see that myself. Is, is, are, are we clear that Mr. Holmes had seconded the motion?
Mr. Holmes, do you assume the second for that motion, Mr. Levy's motion? You had seconded it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. So the motion is to override the chair's decision to hold the meeting by virtual, uh, format on January 11th and return to an in-person meeting. At this point, I will go by roll call vote. Ms. Codwell, how do you vote?
Uh, no.
Mr. Dennison?
No.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
And the chair votes no. Uh, the motion fails four-three. All right. So the meeting on January 11th will remain on an electronic format.
Now, Libby, I do suggest though, that we do revisit it in February.
We certainly can. Uh, definitely can. Uh, just as Dr. Grimacy monitors, uh, the health and safety within our schools on a daily basis, we will continue to do so as we plan ahead. Um, now we can move to item number three, A, update on Aberdeen Primary School, the upset bid process.
May I defer to Mr. Barath?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Uh, so as you're aware, back in November, the board, uh, their business meeting did accept an offer of $120,000 for the old Aberdeen Primary School and begin the upset process for that. Uh, staff posted a legal notice as required for it and received an upset offer of $127,000. Uh, we then issued a second legal notice of the upset and received an offer of $150,000. We issued a third legal notice of this upset bid amount, and it is set to expire January 6th. Uh, we did receive an upset offer already in the amount of $200,000. We will publish that on January 10th with an end date of January 20th for any upset offers. And just for your information, an upset offer for the $200,000 bid must be $210,050 or higher to qualify. And again, this is the process of the upset. Uh, it gets published, upset, published, upset, and continues until there are no upset offers received during the posted time. And then following the final, we will present to the board the results for its consideration to accept or to reject the bid amount. And if there's any questions regarding this process.
Are there questions? Mr. Barath?
Mr. Barath, did, uh, is this being advertised on the internet or through a multiple listing service?
The upset process is required to be published in a newspaper publication by general statute, and we are publishing that in the pilot because our upset offers are all coming from local within Moore County at this time. Our approach is informing, uh, the people that they had, he has had, had contact with throughout the process of the upset offer opportunity.
I, I guess I understand that, but I would wish to urge you and the superintendent to please make sure that our real estate agent has this listed on a multiple, on a commercial, multiple listing service and/or, uh, that it is placed on the internet. This day and age, uh, making an offer to, uh, I'll, I'll defer to our real estate agent here, but, um, I have, I haven't heard of just having, uh, real estate advertised locally in many, many years. Uh, and I think that there's an opportunity to get more money if we, if we, if we advertise it on the internet and on a multiple listing service.
John, clarify for me. I, I thought that, that all that had been done, uh, in advance of this. And when we narrowed down to the actual bidders, we found that, that they were bidding locally. So the question would be, it has Hunter ceased? locally. So the question would be, has Hunter ceased advertising more broadly? I, I did not know that.
No. As preparation of the first offer they received, he did broadcast it and published it on a national commercial listing and also within the lien associates network and has also reached out to independent investors for the properties as well. Throughout the entire process, he's remained in touch for all that expressed any interest whatsoever of the upset process. I don't know if every week he has been updating it as an upset offer. I will have to get clarity on that.
Okay.
But I do know he is reaching out continuously to all that have expressed interest throughout the entire process prior to the upset offer.
Okay. So it would be misleading to say that we're just advertising in the pilot and just doing it locally, yeah?
Well, could, Mr. Barath, could you please, at the board meeting, let us know the name of the multiple listing service that is being used and what advertising is being done nationally through the internet?
Will do.
So on, if he has it in our MLS system, that produces and goes out to states, it goes out everywhere. So anyone, even if you typed it in Zillow, it would come up on Zillow. So I think what to ask him is if he put it in our local MLS, because if he did that, then we're pretty much good on it flowing to any state or country even of what is listed here. I'm not sure if he is. I haven't seen it in there, but that's just maybe something to ask him.
Yes, Chair, that it is a specific commercial listing, not a typical MLS for residential listings. It is a specialized one for commercial investments of properties.
Right. We have that.
Yes, nationally. And I can't remember the name of it. I'll have to get that specific for everybody.
Our MLS does commercial as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's a term. I just don't remember what it is. I will get that for the board at next week's meeting.
All right. Are there other questions for Mr. Barath?
Just a quick question. Mr. Barath, can you reveal the names of the last two bidders? The last two upset bids?
The current one that we received in the amount of $200,000 is from an organization titled Drain the Swamp. The prior $150,000 was by Mr. and Mrs. McKeithen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the update on school construction. Mr. Barath, I want your score.
Thank you, Chair Carter. I will share my screen of the presentation. And if you would, please confirm that you are seeing my PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. Very good. Again, a little simpler and shorter these days with the construction all winding down to basically remaining item at Pinehurst Elementary. Again, this is the architect's rendition of the finished product there. We had great opportunity before the holidays with the staff at Pinehurst Elementary School and working with Principal Chaconi to take them through and let them get an early glimpse of the school, the layout, and took each grade level as well as staff support and building support from there. And a great, great day, even though it was dreary and raining outside. Everyone was so excited and appreciative. They were even getting emotional at a few times of being able to be within a brand-new single building. So the progress has been going very well. Here you see in typical classroom on the first floor, they already have the ceiling grid in, they have the walls primed and first coat applied, the windows are installed, and they're finalizing everything for above-ceiling inspection. So you begin padding them out and getting the mechanical systems fully activated. Here in the main entry lobby area, you can see how they're finishing up all the beautiful ductwork and equipment, mechanical systems that make the building operate that all will be hitting at some point. And down the main hallway as well, you can see how they're ready to get ceiling grid in for final inspections. And at the second floor, you can see areas and on the first floor at the far north end where the terrazzo was about to be installed, and what you see is the expansion control strips being applied to the floor before the terrazzo is poured. At the second floor, not quite as far along as the first, however, they have the partitions up and sanded down, ready for application of prime paint and then getting the final connections ready overhead to hang lights and then the ceiling grid and down the hallway. It's the same condition when you're up on the second floor. The media center coming together with mechanical systems and getting all the electrical distribution ready for lighting to be hooked up and installed and then ready for ceiling grid as well as the art room in this image. This is looking down that hallway from the media center and art room to where the cafeteria is down to the right and the gym is to the left. So you see, there's some more work to do here. This area of the building is going to be their final area of completion as it worked through from the classroom wing to the specialties area. The gymnasium has been really overtaken and used as additional staging of items and materials to be installed. As you recall, it is a small site. Not a lot of opportunity spread out on there. So as large spaces became available, they quit very quickly, converted and used them into staging and preparation. The kitchen, they have the hood hung in there as well as the lock-in coolers and freezers installed, which the kitchen staff that's going to be moving in here was just very, very excited to have the ability to store all the food they're going to need throughout the entire week without trying to rely on guessing and proportioning out the best method for receiving. Outside, the storage building for the lawn equipment and supplies is being worked on in that image to the right. And the brick is finishing up around the tall structure on the right in this image, which is the cafeteria, and getting ready for cleanup. The front of the building, along the front drop-off and pickup, the piles of dirt and sand is because they're putting the footings and foundations in for the canopy that goes along for the drop-off and pickup area there. As a reminder to the board, they're at the completion date of April 8th of 2021 contractually, which means 82% of the construction timeline has passed as of today. The contractor is 75% paid and has not used any additional contingencies or inflation funds remaining from the original award of the contract. It is good to remind the board that we always want to make sure that their amount paid to the amount of progress is in a proportion such as this where they're behind on their progresses. I mean, they're ahead of their progress as opposed to payment to be the other way. Want to also bring up something that Southern Pines Elementary that happened with some of the heavy rains, as you already heard in the news. This was one of the wettest years here for North Carolina. And one of the things that have happened during some of the rains was some of the runoff eroded the back hillside of the playfield. You're seeing three areas in this drone photo of the follow-up after the sections just caved and washed away. During, immediately following the event, you can see closer here how the areas had just collapsed and began washing away into the tree line. Since then, the contractors have been out there. They have cleaned up the entire tree line and the access drive at the base there, as well as reestablished and compacted and reseated and restored the hillside. But some of you may have observed and heard of some of the commotions there. We just wanted to make you aware of that at this time. And at this time, if there's any questions regarding the projects.
Are there questions for Mr. Barath? I just wonder, Mr. Barath, who's covering the cost of that repair?
That is on the contractors under their warranty scope of work and performance.
Mr. Barath, looking forward, is this going to be a problem in the future? Is this land unstable? I mean, what, what, what do you know? Or what, what do you think about that?
The investigation of it after it happened, it indicated that they had not adequately established ground cover to help retain the soils at that area. They had been notified that previously, and the results of the rains pretty much proved the point of which they needed to do. And that is, again, why on that project, we have not issued any final payments because of restoration of some of these items.
But, but when, when done properly, you expect it not to be a problem. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
And do they get paid until we're, we're, where it's validated that we're satisfied, John?
I will not release any funds until I am satisfied that the remediation has been in full compliance with the project.
And if you look at what was left over at Aberdeen, we see evidence that, that in our interaction with that particular contractor, that we mean what we say.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Barath.
Thank you.
To item three C, the additional item on the agenda, which is going back to Dr. Grimace for an update on Plan A and the reopening of, of school tomorrow morning.
Madam Chair, I'm grateful to Mr. Levy for bringing that up. I think it was very timely and probably should have anticipated that it would probably be a, a good evening for us to share some of the information that I share with the board every week, which is modified depending upon the week. And so I'm going to, it just so happens that because of that weekly report, I have a ready narrative that I think I can draw from here to help add some value to everybody's considerations. There've been three very valuable lessons that we've taken away, particularly since students started returning to school under Plan B back in August. And one is, is that we can confirm the research that now shows that transmission is more likely to occur among adults than it does among teenagers and then more so among teenagers than it does among our youngest children. And that's the reason why the governor decided to start with grades K through five before he authorized the return to all in-person instruction for older students. Second, our experience to date proves that our infection rates and quarantines have increased for us. Our experience is that infection rates and quarantines have increased only, only after summer break, Halloween and Thanksgiving so far. The rates always then decrease during prolonged periods of time when school is in session. So the pattern that we've picked up on is that when the students aren't under our supervision, we don't know what, what they are doing, but I can observe the children in my neighborhood, they are not complying with, with the rules that we apply in school. And I think it's fair for us to say that outside of our healthcare institutions and our nursing homes, our schools are probably as strict as anyone on complying with our restrictions and protocols, which is my, my third and final observation was that that compliance with strict COVID-19 restrictions and protocols is far more strict and consistent in our schools than most other areas in our communities. And, and our, and our teachers and our students deserve a lot of credit for that because we don't have to work really hard at that. We, we've really had a real sense of community, and I think our folks have pulled together. Teenagers that I talk to want to be back in school. And, and I think that there's a, there's a lot of effort on their parts to try to convince their peers to, let's do the best we can to see if we can't move this thing forward. Conclusion is, is that students and school employees are much more likely, this is consistent with what Mr. Holmes had indicated, I've concluded that our students and school employees are actually much less likely to contract COVID-19 in school than when they're out of school. Where we have big impacts is immediately after the children have been out of school. The key there, though, is they follow the rules. And so we've got to be in environments where, where the rules are complied. And then we do have a stricter standard for adult meetings. We have a, an intermediate standard for our teenagers, and then we have our tightest standard for our youngest children. That's going to be put at the test when we have more children in school and we're going to have to make some compromises with social distancing. The good news is, is that the CDC guidelines on social distancing, they're six feet, and the, the World Health Organization guidelines for social distancing are three feet. So to the extent that we can do the best we can to keep people separated, if we can get beyond three feet and get as close as we can to six feet, we're going to do the best we can. Biggest test is going to be in grades four and five, where we have our largest pupil teacher ratios. While we must be mindful of a possible post-Christmas resurgence, and we must be mindful of that, we will be watching that data very closely and, and getting reports from the field and analyzing that on a daily and certainly weekly basis. We're going to be mainly looking at that. If it follows the same pattern, it has with the summer and with Halloween and Thanksgiving, this, don't judge it by this week, okay? It, it may, if there's going to be a problem, it may manifest it this week. But if we have a good week this week, I'm not going to rest on that. I'm mainly looking at the, the two weeks subsequent to this one, if it follows the same pattern. But the trends over the past two weeks, over the holidays, and even right before, excuse me, the trend over the past two weeks, so last week and the week before, as Mr. Holmes had indicated, show clear evidence that our community and our region have progressed beyond the post-Thanksgiving surge that we had experienced in that final week of November and the first two weeks of December. And, and clearly, you can't debate that. It, it really surged and it went up, and it is worthy of concern. But there was a leveling two weeks out, and then there was a distinct drop last week, so much so that more counties, not our schools, but more counties, daily infections per 10,000 residents declined by 15 per day between September 17th and 30th. So as there were people expressing concern about this, and I was hearing that, I also was looking at what the real numbers were. And it really looked like the trend was going in the right direction. And I was, I was, I was hearing that that was the same across our region. In fact, we can look on the DHHS website and confirm that 13 out of 14 counties across our region experienced declines in infection rates during the same two weeks. The high number of school district quarantines is something that we have to pay particularly attention, attention to. And if, if we go back to an in-person meetings in February, I want us to be all very cognizant of the fact that the Health Department has told us that if there is one case of COVID at a school board meeting with that gym with the number of people in it, there is a high likelihood that everybody in that gym is going to get quarantined for 14 days. I couldn't get Mr. Whitman and Ms. Fraley to, to give me a guarantee on that, but they would not give me a guarantee contrary to that. And so I think that if there's contributions that I could make to the, the spirited debate that we've had here this evening, it would be that, that whether we're, whether we make a decision to conduct virtual meetings or we go back to in-person, let's be mindful of the fact that we can end up with the entire school board and the entire senior staff and everybody else who's present at the meeting getting quarantined for 14 days. But anyhow, the high number of school district quarantines, the good news for our students is, is that that, those quarantines are still resulting almost exclusively from student and staff exposures that occur outside of school. It's important that we remember that almost all quarantined students and staff members remain healthy, never develop any symptoms, and continue to learn or teach throughout their quarantine periods. Therefore, quarantining actually represents little more than shifting more modest numbers of students to remote learning and more modest numbers of teachers to remote teaching, as opposed to closing an entire school or closing the entire school district. We use quarantining as a means to quarantine classrooms or pods at the secondary level. Rapid isolation and quarantining remain key practices that enable us to keep the vast majority of our students and employees safely at school. So board members and to members of the public, I think that everybody's concerns about this disease are justified, and I don't want to come across as insensitive to that. But I have worked very closely with, with sources in the public health domain, particularly Danny, Dr. Danny Benjamin, who is the lead researcher with the Duke Medical Research Institute and the ABC Science Collaborative. We're very active in that. We, we provide data to that, of course confidential data, but our, our outcome data that we have on our website, we provide to them. They are some chief consultants for CDC on policy. We work very closely with our local Health Department. And we went through a checklist in that last week before the Christmas holidays, and we continued to pay close attention to that. And we really are in a position where, based on what we've experienced so far, we feel very comfortable about making the effort to get our students back in school. I'll add too, on Wednesdays, if you, going back to your action that you took a month ago, you know, what I did in my own determination was, to what extent were we really doing more disinfecting on Wednesdays than we were the rest of the week? In theory, that's what we intended to do. That's what we wanted to do. But in reality, we weren't doing as much of that as what perhaps we had intended to do to begin with. Basically, we were keeping up with disinfections throughout the week, and you didn't particularly need Wednesday to do a whole lot more than what you were doing the rest of the week. With that, then, I had to weigh that against the risks of keeping the children out. And so not only would they end up with an asynchronous learning day as opposed to an in-person day, the other thing that they would have the disadvantage of is that they would be home, and just like the youngsters in my neighborhood would very often be running around chasing each other, playing tag and wrestling and without masks. And I, I saw enough of that to convince me that I think they would be better off if they were in school, learning with masks on, with teachers and principals and other staff members that were making sure that they were safe. Mr. Levy, I hope that, that gets somewhere near what you were looking for.
Well, not only, not only does it, Dr. Grimace, but this is what I'm going to Well, not only does it, Dr. Grimace, but this is what I'm going to ask the chair or you, if it could be done. If you could take that splice of your report and send it to me, I would like to send it to people who are interested in it. I'd also like to see that report that you just made placed on the internet on our website because I think it's concise, I think it says a lot, and it answers the questions. I've been getting a lot of emails, I'm sure you've been getting a lot of emails, other board members have been, and I want them to know that if this school board has differences of opinion, let's say, we're not showing a difference of opinion on this and the safety of our children. And I think that's an important message to do, and I think you've done that not only adequately but extremely well in that report.
Let me work with Ms. Murphy on that so that we're consistent in what we put out, and we certainly have you on what it is that we issue from that. It's easy for me to cut and paste what I just shared. I got off script a little bit, so some of the things I shared weren't exactly off of what I have there, but it reflects that.
At least you don't have to take two takes, you know, this is it.
That's true. Any other questions for Dr. Grimace? Mr. Levy, you do an excellent job answering those parents that are emailing in, too. I read several of your answers, and you're very clear, and you did a good job sharing what Dr. Grimace had given us before as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Bob, I had a question. Do you know how many parents from last time went back to virtual? And if you don't, you can email me later, but I was just curious.
That's a work in progress. We were having some that were calling today because the offices were back open. Some of the parents that had that concern, they hadn't had access to their principals yet. And so we might have to give that a day or two, Ms. Caldwell, because what I tell you now might change by tomorrow morning.
Right.
So, yeah, so we're following up on what we all talked about last month, and that's having just enough flexibility there to know how to work with individuals that have that concern right now, and then do so without throwing our staffing out of balance, looking at some creative ways to do that. So thinking outside the box a little bit.
Thanks.
All right, we'll look forward to that report about enrollment when it finally is stabilized and we can come back to look at that.
All right, Ms. Carter, I would say the enrollment in terms of how they all spread out among all classes K through 12 is a little bit more complicated. Mr. Levy's question was specific to, or excuse me, Ms. Caldwell's question, which follows up on what Mr. Levy pointed out last month, was on this matter of how many originally signed up for in-person, but because of what we see about the growth of community and state and national spread, they're rethinking that. That's something I hope that we'll have perhaps this week.
Yes, we understand that. And it takes a little bit to get our classes stabilized. All right, at this point, we can move on to board comments. Ms. Caldwell, do you have comments?
Yeah, actually, it kind of ties into what we were just talking about. I'm not sure how the governor may rule about our sixth through 12 students, but I feel we may need to change the way we handle virtual learning for them. I am a certified K-8 teacher, and I usually have to do my research on my daughter's homework before I even tackle it with her. So I can just understand where parents who are not even teachers come and how frustrated that they do get. Because I have to sit with my daughter about five to six hours with her every day in order for it to get done. I cannot leave. So I know that some, you know, some parents don't have that luxury. I'm just able to do that because of my job. I wanted to also say that I observed some different techniques. My nieces that are in Connecticut, they are in middle school, and they had, all of Connecticut basically went virtual, and they've been going virtual actually since September. But they do virtual learning that is, basically, you go to school eight to three, and they sit in front of a computer from eight to three, and just like how we have the little checkered board here of all of us, the teacher teaches and the kids are there participating, and it's basically like a classroom, but they're, everyone's at home. She told me that it's been working wonderful. They go to PE, they go to art, they go to music, they have recess, and they have lunch. And they basically, if they're not there, they're considered absent. I think it'd just be interesting to see if we could even try that because, to me, I feel like the governor is not going to have the children's best interest as far as going back to school, sixth through 12, and I really do feel that some children need that. There's a lot of parents that I've talked to that kids are failing, and it's just they don't have time to sit like I do. So I would just, for further, I don't know, future meetings or future talks that we may have about this, I would love just to see maybe some ideas on that. And I also wanted to say that I'm very excited because Southern Pines is opening up tomorrow with all their little kiddos, and I know they are so excited. I've had parents and teachers emailing me how excited they are. Their kids are acting like it's the first day of school. They wanted like a new bookbag, and it was just, it's just very cute. So I am excited for all them. I wish I could be there, you know, congratulating and high-fiving each and everyone, but virtually I will do it. And I just wanted to say good luck to all the teachers tomorrow, and you will be with us, and we'll be thinking about you.
Thank you. Mr. Denison?
No, ma'am, no comments.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes, I have a couple. The first thing I'd like to say is I appreciate everyone's accommodation about my voice. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, the recovery time for my treatment varies between two to four weeks, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Just as a side comment, every morning I wake up, I don't know if I'm going to be the Godfather or Mickey Mouse or something in between, so I'm glad I'm like the Godfather today and not Mickey Mouse. I do want to say one thing about Stacy's comment about her closing comments about revisiting virtual. You know, when I got elected, I went and visited all the private schools and charter schools in the area and looked at different things they were doing. One of the charter schools, they actually have their virtual people in the classroom with the physical people, and by that, there'd be a class of however many first graders, you know, 20 first graders, and then there were five virtual, but they were on the screen in a Zoom call, and they were attending class. There are lots of good ideas that we need to explore, and, you know, lots of good ideas percolating up through the community coming from the board. But, you know, going back to a previous point in this meeting, we can't discuss these ideas or brainstorm these ideas if the chair won't add them to the agenda. And earlier in the meeting, that's what we were asking, were the items that we timely requested to be added to the agenda, be added to the agenda in accordance with our policies? And we can't discuss these great ideas if they're not added to the agenda. That brings me to my third point, which is very, very serious. We're a nation of laws. For many, many, many reasons, it's important that we follow laws, regulations, and especially our own policies. It's a sad day when a public body, any public body, but specifically the Moore County Board of Education, votes for no good reason to ignore our own policies. You see, we have a duty not just to follow our own policies, but to set the example for our students, parents, faculty, and staff. By voting at the beginning of today's meeting to not follow our own policies, we failed our duty to obey regulations and policies and failed to set the example. Shame on us for doing so.
Mr. Holmes, do you have comments?
I'm just, it's very frustrating for me to know that a lot of these topics that we're visiting, it's always going to be a four to three vote. I'm just, that is just very, very frustrating for me. That's it.
Mr. Levy?
Yeah, well, maybe, Philip, I'll tell you. I look on the bright side of things. There were many votes today which were not four to three. There were many votes today which we had agreements on. And there were many votes today which I vehemently disagreed with and will still vehemently disagree with. But I want to explain mostly to the public who's listening that we have a law in the state of North Carolina, and it's called the Open Meetings Act. And so we can't script these things. We have to, without, oftentimes without talking to one another, we come in and we come in with ideas, and sometimes those ideas surprise different people, and sometimes they even get them mad. But at least we do discuss them. I hope we can be open to discussing as many ideas as possible. Clearly, I have a dispute with the chair over discussing certain ideas, but on the bright side, we've discussed many ideas. We've come up with a unified position on the Southern Pines Elementary School, which a little while ago, someone might have said was impossible. With a little work, we could even all be friends. So I would say I would thank the chair, and I would thank all the board members, and I would thank Dr. Grimace and all our staff for putting up with this. This is, in case anybody's looking, I'm a social studies teacher, this is democracy at work. And sometimes it doesn't look pretty, but when you combine free speech with truly elected officials, you have generally a wonderful outcome. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would just like to say Happy New Year to everyone. Hopefully, you had a wonderful holiday and didn't eat too much. A lot of us obviously were around home, but it was just good to take some time away. And then I would like to follow Stacy's comment to just congratulate our principals, our students, everyone involved at our new Southern Pines Elementary School. Our students, our parents have been so excited. I've got calls from there as well as Northmore High School, from the teachers and the parents and the students there. They are opening their new classrooms and auxiliary gym as well, and they are transitioning to their new building. And the staff have done an amazing job transitioning, moving, trying to get everything so perfect on the very first day that students are back in the building and in classrooms. And finally, we will have an opportunity for our students at Northmore to actually be in a classroom and not to be in mobile units, and they are just thrilled and excited. So thank you to our principals, our teachers, everyone who made this possible, that we could begin with this semester. It's just an exciting time for both of those areas, and I just appreciate everyone's hard work.
Thank you. Just to clarify real quickly, as I look at my wrist again, I wear a Fitbit, Mr. Hensley, and it continually telling me it's time to get up and move. So I'm not necessarily checking my watch to see how much time has elapsed, but rather to think, oh, it's time to get some steps in. I'd like to concur with those who have already spoken. Tomorrow is a big day both in Southern Pines and at Northmore. The children and staff at Southern Pines Elementary and Southern Pines Primary are going to be one big new school, very big new school, and we wish Tony Wagner and her staff the very best as they move into their new classrooms and open the doors to those excited children. We wish Principal Purvis the very best up at Northmore. Can't wait to see those children in action eventually when we can return to the gyms and the classroom visitations. To our teachers and staff and students in other schools, please know that we care about each individual, each individual child and every teacher and employee who walks in our hallways. We want a safe, secure, and healthy option for all. To that end, we ask again, if your children are sick or have COVID symptoms, please do not send them to school. If your child has been exposed to COVID or the flu, please do not send them to school. Remind them to practice hand washing and the use of hand sanitizer, to wear their masks, and to distance themselves from others as much as possible. We know these are children, but we know these are smart and respectful children, and they know how to follow the rules. Please help us keep them safe. I'd like to say a special thank you to every employee of the Moore County Schools who's doing his or her part to bring quality education to our children, whether you are the driver of the big yellow bus, the custodian wiping down desks, or the teacher looking in amazement at the 32 fourth graders facing you tomorrow. Please know that you are all appreciated. We probably don't say this often enough, but you are the heart of our Moore County Schools. Please stay safe and healthy in this new year. So as we open our classrooms tomorrow for the start of 2021, though it's a second semester, it's also a new school year. Let's make it the best possible. So, Mr. Denison, do you want to wrap us up?
I move the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
By show of hands, I believe we can vote all in favor. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye.